Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor and privilege to call this meeting in Tallahassee City Commission to Order. It is 3:03 in the afternoon on Wednesday, May 14th. Before we get started, as you will see, there are only three of us here present today. I believe that Commissioner Porter will be participating telephonically. May I have a motion in a second to allow her to do so?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Porter, are you with us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Richardson will not be joining us tonight, period. We wish him well and for a speedy recovery. So this is a little unusual, but there will be three of us in chambers with Commissioner Porter participating. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a very special way to start this evening. As you know, last year, we celebrated our bicentennial. And one of the things that I took great pleasure in as the mayor is reestablishing our friendship and strengthening our ties to the Micasuki Tribe of Florida that play such a significant role in our community and the history of our community as well. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go down and visit the tribe in South Florida and was just welcomed with open arms. The tribe has opened up an embassy right down the road to do work with the state government, and of course, we are pleased to have them here in Tallahassee. Joining us today to provide a blessing to start off our meeting is my friend, Councilman William J. Popeye-Aseola. If you'll please come join us, who serves as the Secretary of the Business side of the tribe. Mr. Secretary, thank you and welcome. Will you please rise?
Shinabishat. Charles Chivko-Popeye, Amahou Chivka De Fouzadet, Ampoujoun Evelyn Konmehen, Ampoujoun Billy. Akednak Nujje Hemanitige, Thunaki Kigah Hezen, Yatapouz Nichek 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 Hezen, May the breathmaker bless these proceedings today and guide us in our words with truth. Shinabish.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Secretary, thank you. We look forward to having you back up in just a second for a very special presentation with the Tallahassee Historical Society. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, again, this is going to be a bit of an unusual meeting. There are three of us in chambers, one participating telephonically. Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Richardson will be in absence, and again, we hope he feels better and gets well soon. Let's real quickly, do we have any agenda modifications, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, walk us through.
Item 1208, which is seeking your approval to negotiate and execute a contract for external auditing services, that was a competitive procurement via RFP that concluded after your agenda was released last week and has been added as item 1208 to today's meeting. And finally, item 1202, which is an update on the Canopy Circle K property, that one has been removed from your agenda.
Okay, and that will be dealt with at a future meeting.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clark, can we please inform anyone, your team that's outside, that as they come, remind them that it has been pulled, that they do not need to stick around unless, of course, they would like to?
Yes, sir, we have given that direction.
Excellent, okay, any other modifications?
No, sir.
Okay, colleagues, if you care to join me, please, down at the podium for some special proclamations and recognitions. Secretary Aseola, will you please come join me? And joining you as well, we have Edward Ornstein, who serves as Deputy General Counsel for the tribe, any other distinguished guests from the tribe that are here, and of course, Bob Holliday, you and all the members of the Tallahassee Historical Society that are here as well, please come join us. We would love to have you down front for this very special presentation. Again, ladies and gentlemen, as we all know, and many times, we drive Micasuki Road or we look at Lake Micasuki, and we often wonder, what is the actual connection with the Micasuki Tribe? And again, two weeks ago, I had the honor and the privilege of going down and spending time with the Micasuki Tribe, and the secretary, and the chairman, and the vice chairman, and the entire tribe was absolutely wonderful, hosting myself and Deontay Gavin. It was an educational experience, but on top of that, it allows us to more closely bring our relationship together, which is something that I cherish. One of the key things that I learned is that out of the clans of the Micasuki Tribe, I believe, if I understand correctly, one of the origin stories of one of the clans begins with the waters of Lake Micasuki, right here in our community. We have very strong ties with that. Popeye, it's great to see you again. It's great to have you in chambers. Let me turn over the microphone to you, Mr. Secretary, for a very special introduction, few words in a presentation.
Shinabishat to the city of Tallahassee for allowing us to be up here. This was our traditional homelands, and over time, we did have to make some adjustments. You know, if you look at the history, it kind of explains itself, but it's my understanding that unfortunately, not everybody has an understanding of that history. So I did want to say a few words, just to kind of help give you guys a little background on who we are as Micasuki, because as the mayor mentioned, there's Lake Micasuki, and there's signs saying Micasuki, but this might be really the first time you guys have seen a Micasuki back up here like this. As I mentioned, this is our traditional homelands, the heart of the historic Micasuki tribal town, and the core of the Seminole Confederacy. All of that was around Lake Micasuki. We were removed from North Florida after Andrew Jackson and the Creeks invaded in 1818 and burned down our communities. We fought for generations for our right to remain in Florida, pushed deep into the Everglades, and by the end of the Third Seminole War in 1858, only 200 of the Micasuki and Seminole people remained in the state. And those are the two Florida tribes that we have today, Micasuki and Seminole. Our people have been private in the centuries since because of that history. You know, unfortunately, on our end, for most of our history, interactions with non-natives tended to be aggressive on their part, which is why it's notable that that is not what we're dealing with today as obvious from my presence in front of you folks today. It is important that we build good partnerships to make sure that the native history of Tallahassee is truly told to its fullest extent. We are grateful to have the partnership of the city and of the Tallahassee Historical Society. I want to thank Mayor Daley for taking a trip down to visit us, touring the reservation, immersing himself in the Micasuki community. It's not an easy task, and it's not something that's been afforded to a lot of people over time. So I hope you folks can see as well how serious we are about reestablishing this connection with the great city of Tallahassee. I want to honor this growing relationship with the Tallahassee Historical Society, which has been eager to collaborate with the tribe, and I say shinabishat to you folks as well for being so willing to extend that hand. And it's foundational to reinforcing the history of this city and state. To this end, we announce a donation of $10,000 to the Tallahassee Historical Society to better resource future collaborations on telling this important Micasuki and Seminole history. Want to welcome the president right now, so we can go ahead and formally establish this relationship. One last thing, I would like to say, there was a great Native American poet by the name of John Trudell, and he would always say, "It's a good day to be indigenous." In Micasuki, I would say, "Hemanitige Yakete Shota Maga Hejoja." Do.
Thank you.
I am, I have no words to express this. I'm Bob Holliday, President of the Tallahassee Historical Society. This gift does not right every wrong that was done to the Micasuki, but it will help us and help them tell the story and our shared history, because we do have shared history. We have, this was the crossroads, this was where all sorts of different cultures met, and it's their history, but it's also all of our history. So thank you all very, very much. Welcome back, and we're so pleased.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, please.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have three incredible proclamations. The first one, recognizing National Public Works Week. I'd like to call on Commissioner Jeremy Matlow, who will be presenting this proclamation, and I want to ask all members, all members of City Tallahassee Utility Family, come on up and come join us, please. Come on up. We are so thrilled to have you all in chambers.
It's gonna take a while for this many people to get up here, so we'll give it a second. Oh, no, I'm good, I'm good, thank you. All right, thank you all for being here today. We appreciate your hard work. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, and whereas this year's theme is People, Purpose, Presence, which highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve their communities every day by planning, designing, building, maintaining, and operating the infrastructure, public facilities, and services that are vitally important to sustainable, healthy, resilient communities. Contribute to a high quality of life and are integral to our city's transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, energy, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks and trail systems, and more. And whereas, City of Tallahassee Public Works Professionals were honored by the American Public Work Association Big Bend and Florida chapters for six projects, including earning Project of the Year awards for Xyla Road Pass, Capital Circle, and Blairstone Road Force Main Rehabilitation, McCord Park Pond Drainage Ditch Improvements, and Merrick Skyline Ditch Enclosure. And whereas the City of Tallahassee is committed to the national leader in the delivery of public service, and its dedicated public works employees demonstrate this commitment through completing a variety of projects, including over 7.7 million in street and sidewalk improvements, $61 million in the wastewater collection system upgrades, 19.5 million in potable water system enhancements, and 9.3 million in stormwater improvements, while securing over $20 million in infrastructure grant funding in fiscal year 2024 alone. That's a lot of money when you add all that together. It's a lot just to read, so you know it's a lot. Whereas, in addition, all city employees, including public works personnel, serve our community by preparing for and responding to severe weather events, such as the May 2024 tornadoes, Hurricane Helene, and the 2025 snow event, illustrating the essence of public works. And whereas, city crews have continually demonstrated their dedication and willingness to go above and beyond after emergency events by restoring services locally and subsequently traveling to other communities, including Madison County and Lakeland in 2024, to help restore vital services. And whereas, we celebrate the hard work and dedication of public works professionals here in Tallahassee and throughout the world. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor John E. Daley and the authority vested in him as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize May 14th through May 18th as National Public Works Week in Tallahassee.
You got the tie on, you dress the part, come on. Absolutely.
All right, well, first of all, on behalf of all our public works professionals, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, point officials, thank you for taking the time today to recognize our city public works professionals. One might ask what public works are. Commissioner Matlow hit on it earlier. Public works are the people that plan, design, construct, and maintain, and the assets and facilities that make up many of the city's services, such as transportation networks, roads, sidewalks, water, wastewater, electric, stormwater, public buildings and spaces, parks and recreation, solid waste, and right-of-way management for a few. The city has hundreds of public works professionals, and their daily efforts help keep our community strong and city running. During catastrophic events, our public works professionals are the front line. They are the first in, they are the last out, leaving their families to ensure the essential services are restored and accessible for our citizens. Our public works professionals are frontline responders, they are first responders. It takes a special person to make a career as a public works professional, as a public servant. These professionals selflessly serve the public, day in and day out, in some of the harshest conditions. This year's APWA Big Bend Branch Annual Rodeo will take place on May 22nd at the city's southeast farm. Come out and help us celebrate National Public Works Week and our public works professionals at this event. Everybody here, thank you for taking the time today to recognize and appreciate our city's public works professionals.
Can we get a picture? We're gonna do the best. Everybody's just trying. Well, you go ahead and help us, help us, help us stage, everybody. While we're, while we're getting everybody staged, let me say a couple of words real quick. Could not be more proud to work with this incredible group of men and women at the city of Tallahassee. You know, too many times, we take for granted the incredible quality of life that we have here in Tallahassee. These are truly the men and women behind that quality of life, they're on the front lines. When we talk about storm responses, a lot of times, as society, we think of first responders being our police and our fire, EMS, and of course, we are truly, truly thankful for the great work that they do. But ladies and gentlemen, you are looking at the ladies and gentlemen of public works. These are the other first responders that we don't necessarily think of, that are out there on the front lines, that are leaving their families before the storms hit, to be able to station around our community and respond just as quickly after the storm. On behalf of myself, my family, and the city of Tallahassee, thank you all for everything that you all do, day in and day out, and I couldn't think of a more appropriate time than heading into storm season to be able to say that publicly. I said it quietly over there, I will say it publicly. I will be out at the rodeo, I will be talking smack to our county folks. It's one of the greatest competitions of technical skills on all of the big equipment. The county folks will be out there, our great city folks will be out there, we beat them all the time. It's a little embarrassing, but nonetheless, it's a big competition. If you've never seen it before, come on out and check it out. Great, thank you all again. Appreciate it. All right, Diane. At this time, I'd like to invite the mayor pro tem, Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, to please come join me and our friends from Moms Demand Action that are here as well for a special presentation.
Thank you. No, that's thank you to you all for what you do. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas every day, more than 125 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded. And whereas firearms are the number one cause of death for children in the United States. And whereas cities across the nation, including Tallahassee, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, public safety is a community's highest priority and responsibilities. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and a group of Hadiya's friends asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color that symbolizes safety and life. And whereas, on June 6th, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, our people across the United States will participate in National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6th, 2025, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize June 6th, 2025, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Tallahassee, and urge all citizens to wear orange as a symbol of our hope and efforts to create a future free from gun violence. And he has signed it on this day, May 14th, 2025. We will join you in that agreement to wear orange on June 6th, 2025. And thank you for the work that you're doing and never letting us forget that we are a safe community and we need to do our part. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. I accept this on behalf of the members of Tallahassee Moms Demand Action. We know that this will help raise awareness about the issues of gun violence in our community. And again, join us on June 6th and wear orange. Thank you.
as tradition, light up City Hall and light up the pedestrian bridge in orange in honor of Gun Violence Awareness Day as well. Our third presentation that we have, proclamation that I look forward to presenting here, I would like to ask, well, let's see here, Judge Jones, I believe you're the senior ranking member, if you will come join us. Jessica Yeri, our elected public defender is here as well. We have Kendra Brown, Director of Criminal Case Management, that's here. All of our friends from the judiciary, come join us. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas, according to all rise, treatment courts are the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history for reducing crime by addressing substance use and mental health disorders. And whereas, treatment courts save an average of more than $6,000 for every individual they serve. And whereas, treatment courts provide a range of economic benefits to a community, such as reduced costs in court and prison expenditures, increased tax revenues, lowered foster care expenses, and decreased costs related to victimization. And whereas, treatment courts combine accountability with evidence-based treatment. And whereas, treatment courts annually refer more than 150,000 people to lifesaving treatment and recovering support services. And whereas, according to all rise, treatment courts significantly improve substance use and mental health disorder treatment outcomes and prevent fatal overdoses. And whereas, treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. And whereas, there are now more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide. And whereas, treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises, we all rise. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of May as Treatment Court Month. In witness of each and every one of you, I've read into the record, signed with my signature, John E. Daley, dated May 14th, 2025. Kendra, Judge, public defender Yeri, it is an honor to have you and all members of judiciary that are here. Kendra, let me present this to you and encourage you to say a few words as well. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of Chief Judge Francis Alman and Trial Court Administrator Elizabeth Garber, as well as our treatment court judges, which are Judge Nina Ashanafi Richardson for our felony drug court, we have Judge Jason Jones that oversees our mental health court, Judge Joshua Hawks that oversees our juvenile drug court. I think I'm missing one person. Veterans Treatment Court, but Judge Riggins, our newest treatment court judge. I'd like to say thank you to the city of Tallahassee for recognizing the work that I call our rock stars do. Each of these judges have teams of individuals that are truly rock stars, because what we do every single day, we walk into that courthouse, is we look at cases where individuals need a little bit more attention, and we work tirelessly to find out what their story is. Because everyone in every single treatment court has a story that's a little bit different and sometimes needs a little bit more attention, and that's what we do. We have Ms. Staton here from our drug court, we have Ms. Edrine Johnson, who's our public defender for several of our courts. So in telling the story, we hope to actually provide services that they need and help them to rewrite the story. So in addition to thanking the city for the proclamation, I want to thank the city for our funds that it's dedicated to that very rewriting of that story for about over 10 years now. Those funds help us rewrite the story by giving them medication upon release, housing, clothing, food, the things that so many sometimes take for granted. Those funds are invaluable in helping us get somebody back on their feet and onto a different path and out of the criminal justice system. So thank you to the city for that, and...
Thank you, everyone, and we are also very grateful at the public defender's office for this proclamation and recognition by the city. I think for us, first and foremost, it's most important to remember all of our clients, every single one of them that come through the criminal legal system, unfortunately, have some sort of trauma, have had their own story, have had their own experience. And treatment courts like this are the most beneficial, are the most rewarding, and most importantly, increase public safety in such a significant way, right? When we move from punishing everyone and incarcerating everyone to actually getting to the root cause of what is causing that issue, it's a significant benefit for all of us. So we are very grateful for treatment courts, and I will tell you, we wish we had more, right? So let's keep up the funding and the support and all of the things we need for our clients. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our assistant public defender, Edrine Johnson, who is the lawyer in these courts every single day, helping our clients navigate treatment courts. And ultimately, the goal, right, is when you come through treatment court, most of the time, you come out with a clean record then, right? There's that accountability piece, that you do everything that's expected of you, and you're able to move on from that alleged crime or from that charge. And so if we all, as a community, continue to support treatment courts like this and continue to do this kind of work, I can assure you that so many of our clients can move forward in a positive way after having been involved in the system. So thank you for this recognition, and thank you for acknowledging the incredible work our specialty courts do.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to thank the mayor and thank the commissioners for this recognition, and thank the city of Tallahassee. The work that we do in the courts is very important. The reason why a judge didn't speak is because we're just the figureheads in the court. People like Kendra and the public defenders and the state attorneys are the ones that are actually doing the work. We get to sit up on the bench, but we're not the ones that are in the trenches doing the work and getting help for these people. You know, our goal should be to divert people away from the criminal justice system, and when that can't happen, this is a way to try and help them and get to the source of the problem that caused them to do the act that got them in front of a judge, and hopefully at the end, get those charges dismissed. That is the goal in every one of our treatment courts. And every treatment court is a little bit different, because every problem is a little bit different. So I just want to thank you all for this recognition, thank you all for the funding and the support. Thank you all for the funding and the support. And I hope that we can further support the system and also come up with ways that we can maybe fix the root problem that get people to not enter the system in the first place. Thank you all.
In fact, I would like to ask all of Scott's family and friends to come join us as well. This presentation is not on the agenda, but it's very special. As the mayor of Tallahassee, I think it's important, and throughout the course of the seven years that I've served as your mayor, to recognize outstanding individuals that have made significant contributions to our community. Today, we are here to honor one of our heroes. If you look at the quality of life we have here in Tallahassee, one of the things that we claim and are so proud of is the arts and the culture. And when we talk about live music, there is no other individual that's had a greater impact in Tallahassee, single-handedly, than Mr. Scott Carswell. Scott had a vision 40 years ago, open up a venue that would serve as a gathering spot here in Tallahassee that would provide incredible entertainment to our community. And from that vision 40 years ago grew the Moon, the Musical Moon. I don't think there's a single person in this room or in the sound of my voice that has not been to the Musical Moon. And what started off as basically a music venue has grown into so much more. Over the course of 40 years, you have held presidential events from the White House here in Tallahassee at the Moon. You have held all types of nonprofit events. During times of crisis, it has been a gathering point and a distribution from everything, from fresh food and vegetables to necessary needs after hurricanes. You've worked with local nonprofits, i.e. Springtime Tallahassee is one that comes to mind for the distribution of their breakfast to the teachers in our community, on top of providing some of the greatest talent that we have seen come through Tallahassee. And it all started with you, Scott. Now, we all give Julie full credit for actually running the Musical Moon and all the business side of it. But today, ladies and gentlemen, we are here to honor Scott Carswell. Now, as the mayor of Tallahassee, I have the distinct honor and privilege to present the highest award. It is solely at my discretion as well. And Scott and family, if y'all want to come join, you thought you were just getting a We intended to do this at a special occasion on April 24th of this year. But if you remember back on April 24th, we had a weather system that came through that caused us to have to cancel. So I invited Scott to come in chambers with family today. During the medieval times, we lived in walled cities, walled communities. And those that were in charge of the cities and the communities would often provide the key to the city to the most trusted member of that community, not only to lock the city and protect the city and its citizens, and they were trusted to do so on a daily basis, but it also gave them free rein to come and go on beyond the walls of the city to represent the ideals and the values of that city. And today, it is a ceremonial honor, but it is the highest honor that a mayor can give, which is the key to the city. And we only give it, we being mayors, only give it to those individuals that truly represent the ideals and values of our community, but has also had such a significant impact on our community. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise in body or spirit. It is my honor and privilege to present to Mr. Scott Carswell for outstanding service to the City of Tallahassee. It is dated April 24th, 2025, which is the original 40-year anniversary that you opened the doors of the Musical Moon. But I am here to present it to you today on May 14th. Signed with my signature, John E. Daly, presented to you in front of each and everyone here today. Ladies and gentlemen, the key to the City of Tallahassee.
It's pretty special and very humbling. And I certainly want to say that the credit goes to my 40-year partner, my wife and my children, Scott Jr. and Jack, who both worked in the business. It's great to now be in the company of one of my best friends, DJ Dimp right there, and of course, my longtime friend, George Clinton, who now I feel like I'm really in honorable company. And I want to say that on this date, the mayor was in the building.
That's right.
40 years ago.
That's right.
My sister was his teacher.
That's right.
And brought him down there and supervised him, I hope.
But now you gotta tell us, who was it? Who was the group?
It was the producers.
It was the producers, my favorite man.
Your favorite. And we brought him back again.
That's right.
But thank you, Diane, for being my friend. Curtis, who's not here, hope you get well. And Jacqueline, thank you from afar. And boy, it's pretty special. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very humbling.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Absolutely. Between being able to honor Scott and the Mcksuckie Tribe and the other proclamations that we were presented. All right, Mr. Manjri, do we have any announcements to come before the City Commission at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. 7.01, we have the acceptance of the fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive financial report.
I think Inspector General will introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Item 7.01 is asking for the City Commission's acceptance of the 2024 annual comprehensive report. David Reed, the Chair of the Audit Committee, is here to provide a few comments and ask for the approval.
Excellent. Mr. Reed, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
How are you doing?
I'm doing fine. I'm doing fine.
Good. Welcome back.
I'm retired, but I still volunteer on committees.
No, yes, sir. Thank you. We appreciate you.
We have, the auditors have presented their review of the annual comprehensive financial report. We reviewed that as we do all our audits, and we recommended unanimously that it go forward to the City Commission, and the City Commission accepted. There's one thing that I would like to say about this. When you get an audit, any entity that gets an audit has to have financial statements. For the City of Tallahassee, the financial statements are prepared by the Financial Services Department. The Director of Financial Services is Patrick Twymann. This is a monumental task. You can see just how much information is there. And any local audit, local government audit, is complex. But the City of Tallahassee is very complex with all the utilities and everything that we provide. And I would just like to tip my hat to Patrick Twymann. I'd like to mention two other people that work on that report in leadership positions, Roberta McManus and Rita Stevens. On page 17 of the report, you can see all the employees that work on this report. But this is a mammoth report. I worked in local government for years. The thing about this report is as soon as you're done, you start to think about next year's. So it is, it's never-ending. The auditor gave us an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can get. And so I think the agenda item outlines, option one is to accept the fiscal year annual comprehensive financial report by the City Commission, and that's our recommendation.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Mr. Reed, I want to thank you for your voluntary services, Chair. I want to thank you for your dedicated service, and not to put you on the spot, but man, how many years did you work with the city?
I worked with the city for 22. I worked for county for seven, and I worked for the City of Dunedin for seven.
Wow. Thank you so much.
36 years of doing this. And the audits that we've had in the last few years have been exceptional. I don't think I ever had an audit in the 36 years that didn't have some management letter comment. Maybe I wasn't that good, but they have done an outstanding job in the last two years.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any comments?
I'd like to move that we accept the fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive financial report with accommodations.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Commissioner Porter, are you still with us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I want to make sure you have the opportunity. Any comment?
Thank you for all the hard work.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Passes unanimously four zero. We are on the consent agenda. Have any of the consent items been pulled?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Colleagues.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda.
That's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. We are on City Commission Item 10.01, the recommendation of the Florida League Cities Board Directors Nominating Committee. Am I introducing that or Mr. Clerk?
I'd be glad to just introduce the item, Mayor. This item is a recommendation from the City of Tallahassee to have a representative from the City Commission serve on the Florida League of Cities Board for their 10 most populous cities. Currently, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox serves in that capacity. Would be interested in continuing, but there's no recommendation from staff specifically because it is your item.
Great. You interested in continuing to serve, Commissioner?
Yes, I am.
All right.
It's my honor.
Sounds great.
Move selection of Diane Williams Cox.
Properly moved by Commissioner Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? I'm sorry, was there any discussion on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Passes unanimously four zero. Item number 10.02, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.02 recommends the reappointment of Seth Clark to the City's Sinking Fund Commission. In that capacity, he also serves on our three-member Citizen Investment Advisory Committee. He has served one term. This will be his second before he has to rotate off. He would serve through 2028.
Excellent. Any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues.
I move for option one to reappoint Seth Clark to the Sinking Fund Commission, seat one.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. All right. Introduction of ordinance, Madam Attorney, 11.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-Z-08, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the Canopy Plan Unit Development Concept Plan on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, located on 505 acres at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fleishman Lane and Centerville Road on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 25-Z-08 and set the first and only public hearing for August 20, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
All right. We don't take public comment on the simple introductions. No actions taken, but a ceremonial vote to introduce. Is there a motion?
Move introduction.
Move introduction by Commissioner Matt Low, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-Z-11, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on point, I'm sorry, on 0.76 acres located at 1405 Melvin Street as and in Central Urban 12 with historical preservation overlay, CU 12 with HPO, from Central Urban 12, CU 12, on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, adding a structure to the local register of historic places, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 25-Z-11 and set the first and only public hearing for August 20, 25, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte, excuse me, disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Commissioner Matt Low, are you moving to introduce?
Sure. Move introduction.
I'll second.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Passes unanimously four zero. 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-O-13, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 7, elections of the Code of General Ordinances by deleting it in its entirety and substituting new provisions in its stead, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 25-O-13 and set the first and only public hearing for June 11, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Commissioner Matt Low making the motion?
Move introduction.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All right. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. 11.04, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.04 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-O-14, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 14 of the City of Tallahassee Charter, providing 60 days to fill a vacancy in the commission, including office of mayor, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 25-O-14 and set the first and only public hearing for June 11, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Commissioner Matt Low?
Move introduction.
Properly moved, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. 11.05, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.05 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-O-15, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, imposing a moratorium upon the establishment of new or expansion of existing gas stations through December 31, 2025, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce number 25, ordinance number 25-O-15, and set the first of two public hearings for June 11, 25, at 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall, and the second and final public hearing for August 20, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent.
Move option one.
Properly moved by Commissioner Matt Low, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. Passes unanimously four zero. Madam Attorney, anything else to be introduced?
No, sir.
Good job. Policy formation direction, twelve point oh one, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twelve point oh one requests that the city commission adopt two resolutions authorizing me or my designee to initiate eminent domain lawsuits in order to acquire private property owned by Loft Real Estate Holdings Number Two, LLC, at thirteen twenty South Monroe Street, parcel two fifty-six, and Loft Real Estate Holdings LLC, FAMU Way, parcel two fifty-eight, for the construction of the last segment of the FAMU Way Phase Four roadway improvements.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation to adopt.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Second for discussion. Commissioner Matt Low.
Thank you. I'm not sure who, Madam Attorney or Mr. Manager, who's best to. Can you walk us through the current communication with the property owner, how those conversations have gone, if there's an impact to the businesses and those sorts of things?
Sure. Mr. Manager, maybe we ask Mr. Culverhouse. Yes, I think Mr. Culverhouse would be the best person to answer that for you, Commissioner.
Mr. Culverhouse, thank you so much for joining us.
Certainly, Mayor Commissioners. This particular property, we have been negotiating with this property owner for about a year and a half now. It's a little bit of a different situation. The property owner and his attorney are willing to move forward. The problem is, is he has a portion of the property has a private lien on it, and that lien holder does not want to move forward. And so the only way around that is to initiate the eminent domain process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other comment? Hearing none. Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. Item number twelve point oh three, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twelve point oh three is an update on Washington Square concerning code enforcement violations. If I could, I'd like to ask Deputy City Attorney Lou Norvell to give you a brief explanation of the item and answer any questions that the commission may have.
Mr. Norvell, thank you so much. How are you doing?
Good, good.
See you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This item concerns the property which we refer to as Washington Square. As you know, construction ceased at this site in 2019. The city has brought code enforcement actions concerning the property, both for building code and environmental code violations. Municipal Code Enforcement Board has found the property in violation. Environmental Board has found the property in violation, and fines have been assessed against the property and can continue to increase on a daily basis. The current fines now exceed four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The fines are secured by liens which have been recorded against the property, and we are looking for your direction. The city attorney's office can file an action to foreclose upon the liens, and if the action runs through to conclusion, the clerk of the court will sell the property at auction, and the proceeds of the sale will be applied to the city fines. The city attorney's office is also evaluating other legal remedies which may be pursued against the property. Staff recommendation is to authorize an action to foreclose the liens as well as to pursue other remedies. Assistant City Attorney Jenny Painter and I here to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Excellent, thank you. First of all, any questions for the city attorney, deputy attorney? Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
I, for one, am very excited to see us move forward with this action, and I look forward to supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you both for your hard work and dedication on this issue. It is time for us to move forward.
And with that in mind, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move for option one.
Okay. Option one's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the attorney's office for the hard work. I think this site has been a source of frustration, I think, to every member of our commission as well as our community for years now, and I do think it's important, as we have fines in place, that we show that our rules have teeth and that we need to move forward. I do have questions about restoring the site to the sidewalk and safety measures. Can that be incorporated when we move forward? And if not, if the property sold, where does that burn? When does it get back to being a property that can be utilized again?
Mr. Norvell?
So, Mr. Mayor, the city and the county have been, both been looking at the sidewalks here. I mean, the, this is private property for the site. The developer did tear up the right-of-way, which includes the sidewalks. We've been looking for ways to pay for those sidewalk improvements. If this property is sold, a new owner would come in, and when the site's redeveloped, we would anticipate that the roadway and the sidewalk would be repaired at that time. But I know that both city and county are looking at restoration of the sidewalk and the roadway.
Mr. Mallow?
Yeah, thank you. I just don't want it to drag out another six years, even if it's sold again, if we can look at how, if we have to take the burden and bill it later, if that's whatever the solution could be to restore it, would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion for staff recommendation was made by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. We're on item number twelve point oh four. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Attorney, great job. You just had a full-through of the body. Excellent job. Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Item twelve oh four asks the city commission to adopt resolution twenty-five R. twenty-six, which will authorize the city to issue up to one hundred twenty-four million dollars of energy system bonds to refund currently outstanding debt. Along with the resolution to issue the bonds, the recommended action includes appointment of Goldman Sachs as senior manager and Seibert William Schenk and Raymond James to serve as underwriters for sale of the issue.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move acceptance.
Commissioner Matt Low properly moves acceptance of staff recommendation, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. Item twelve point oh five. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Similarly, this item asks the city commission to adopt resolution twenty-five R. twenty-five, authorizing the city to issue up to one hundred ten million dollars of consolidated utility systems bonds to both refund currently outstanding debt and to finance current capital projects. Along with the resolution adoption, the recommended action includes appointment of Bank of America as the senior manager and Seibert William Schenk and Samuel A. Ramirez as co-managers for sale of the bonds.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Wonderful. Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Hearing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. We're on item number twelve point oh six. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This item asks the city commission to adopt resolution twenty-five R. twenty-four, which would authorize the city to issue up to one hundred five million dollars of capital bonds to both refund outstanding debt and to finance current capital projects. Along with adopting the resolution, the recommended action includes appointment of Samuel A. Ramirez as senior manager and Bank of America and Raymond James as co-managers.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're on item number twelve point oh seven. Mr. Sutton?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, item twelve point zero seven seeks your approval for the update of city commission policy one oh four. Previously, that served as the city's audit policy. With the passage of the charter amendment last November, this policy revision is the last step of implementing those, that charter amendment. Just very briefly, the, the, the policy was previously known as the audit policy and is being renamed to be the inspector general policy. It required a substantive reorganization of the policy, one, to match the standard format of all city commission policies, but also to add some additional things that were not in there previously. The first is to add a specific statement of policy that was not previously included. The new section on definitions has been added, as well as updates to the responsibility of the inspector general, which includes the responsibilities relating to investigations, inspections, and evaluations, and updates as to how reports from the inspector general office will be communicated to the city commission. So with that, we seek approval of the update to commission policy one oh four.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation to approve the proposed updated, update to the city commission policy one oh four.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matt Low. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. We're on item number twelve point oh eight. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item twelve point oh eight seeks the city commission's approval of a contract for external audit services, beginning with fiscal year 2025. First, to begin with, I'd like to just commend the city's audit committee and Commissioner Williams-Cox for serving on the RFP evaluation committee. This is a little bit of a time-constrained RFP because we try to fit in this tiny little window between the completion of the 2024 financial statement audit and before the 2025 financial statement interim period begins. So there's this tight little window between those. As you know, we just had the acceptance of the 2024 audit this year, and we expect interim field work to begin in July. From this RFP, we had four respondents, two of which were deemed responsive. The, the highest-ranked firm is being recommended by the audit committee for selection. With that, I'll entertain any questions or the acceptance of the recommendation of the evaluation committee.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move option one.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Matt Low, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously four zero. Do we have any other items coming for us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Okay. I think for the first time in seven years, we have not had a full agenda where we did not have one public speaker, and the city manager did not have one single issue. And we're done at four oh six. Just saying, Mr. Manager, just saying.
I don't know.
Actually, it was great. I appreciate everybody that did participate and present tonight. We are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, I have two speakers.
All right.
At this point. The first is Matt Thompson. The second is Maya Schennfeld. So, Mr. Thompson can come to the microphone in the middle of the room. Each of those speakers, Mayor, as you know, will have three minutes for remarks. The light in front of the mayor will start green, and it'll turn yellow when you got thirty seconds left, and I'll also give you a heads up.
Good to see you, Mr. Thompson.
Good to see you, sir. How you doing?
Good.
Everybody?
Sorry, your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Thompson, five-ten Bobin Brook Lane, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-one-two. For those that don't know me, I am managing partner of Fuller Table Hospitality, fifteen million a year in revenue, three hundred employees here in the city of Tallahassee. We have been operating in the College Town area since two thousand and thirteen. We were the first thing open, and I've seen a lot of growth, and I've seen a lot of change in that area. That, we are the number-one tourist destination in the city of Tallahassee. The amount of people that we will see during a spring graduation, a summer graduation, a December graduation, and the seven home football games, and any random spring weekend would be mind-blowing if you spent time down in College Town. To put it into perspective, township does more revenue the week of spring graduation than it will all May fifteenth to August fifteenth in a ninety-day period, in one week. We have seen cars come down that road at a ridiculous rate. We have no speed bumps. We have nothing to be able to slow people down. My main intent would be certainly to shut down the road, and I understand there's process to that. I am not a urban planner. I am not a city planner. I sling booze and BLT dip for a living, okay? But I can recognize a hazard when I see one. About a month ago, a car went sixty miles an hour down Madison Street. FSU that night played Wake Forest. It was a comeback win in the, in the bottom of the ninth inning. It was a hell of a victory, if you guys saw it. If that game would have ended on time, and we would have had people from that game down in the district, you would, you would be talking today as if this was something that happened in New Orleans. It would have killed twenty to thirty people. It barely missed five. I showed the video. I posted it on social media from the Madison social Twitter account. I apologize about the language. We own bars for a living. Not everybody has the etiquette that I do. And it ended, the car went through Madison, went through the sidewalk, or through the crosswalk, over Woodward, and ended upside down in the IM field. If you do not take action on our area, someone will die. I'm telling you now. I'm not meaning shut down. I would love the road shut down twenty-four-seven permanently because I don't think there's a reason to have that road open. It is nothing more than how they get around the Gain Street catastrophe as quick as they possibly can. But we at least need to come to a conclusion of putting pillars up in the road that go up and down, and we can turn that off. On Friday, April twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, you're.
Wrap up your thoughts.
Yep. On Friday, April twenty-seventh, we, we experienced senior bar crawls in College Town. If you don't know what senior bar crawl's on, it's all the seniors do a bar crawl. And it was a epic mess.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Maya Schennfeld.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Maya Schenefeld. I live on 108 Columbia Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. And good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm a student at Florida Agricultural Mechanical University. I'm studying environmental science right now. I'm a second year, and I'm here to speak on the importance of the transparency and the urgency as we move towards Tallahassee's 2050 goal of 100% renewable energy. According to the city's own clean energy plan, as of 2022, only about 4% of our electricity is come from solar energy. On page three of the Clean Energy Plan, it states that we have a 60-megawatt commercial-scale solar farm at the airport. And on page five of the same Clean Energy Plan, a column on page 13 shows the net capabilities, and it looks to be only 12.4 megawatts. And this is really confusing for me because the 2024 site plan, there's a huge difference in 12.4 and 60 megawatts. These are both describing the airport, solar energy, and it's super confusing. According to the 10-year of the city's total net summer capability is 737 megawatt. And if we're producing 60 megawatts, then it's 8% to 9% coming in solar. But if it's only 12 megawatts, then that's only around 2%, which is a huge jump. And this is super confusing, and I want to be able to get to the bottom of this, and I'm worried we're not going to be on track for our 2050 goal of providing 100% clean energy. A vote solar study from 2020 gave Tallahassee's utilities a C grade for the heavy reliance on gas. While comparing it to other cities like Orlando, they get a B, which is disheartening. If we achieve these goals and we shut down the vast majority of our gas plants in the next 25 years, and maybe a plan that outlines a timeline for shutting down these gas plants and replacing them with solar, we can meet these goals. I haven't seen that, and I want to know more about the city's plan to process this. We need a progress report, and we need to make sure that we're on track. I've struggled to find updated public reports showing this and where we are in 2025 currently. Transparency is the key to accountability and a cleaner, healthier future for all of us. That's why I, along with the other young advocates, respectfully urge you to commit to an annual publicly available report detailing our progress on the Clean Energy Plan. That's all I have. Thank you all so much for listening.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Mike Crowe, will you raise your hand real quick? So if you see the gentleman over here, Mr. Mike Crowe? All right, Tony's here as well. Okay, wonderful. These two gentlemen can answer those questions that you had specifically about the electric utility while you're in chambers. I'd encourage you to go ahead on over, and they can help you out some of the clarification. Yep, absolutely. Our next speaker, please.
And congratulations on being a student at the number-one HBCU.
There you go.
Go Rattlers.
There you go.
There are no other speakers on unengaged items.
Okay, sounds great. We are under commission time. I'll go ahead and start it off. Mr. Thompson brought up some points about Madison Street. I know that we've all been contacted. Mr. Manager, you want to weigh in on some thoughts on that? Mr. Thompson still here with us?
He stepped out. I think he stepped out into that.
All right, well, nonetheless...
Yes, sir. Actually, what I'd like to do is ask Deputy City Manager Karen Jumminville to share an update. She shared an email with you, the mayor and commissioners, maybe last week on the topic. And a traffic calming study has been asked for by, I believe it was Mr. Thompson, but somebody that's interested in that particular roadway. That's underway. Karen can kind of share those details, what it means, what we look at and possible outcomes. So I'll ask her to provide the update.
Excellent.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Jumminville, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well. Yes, the city manager is correct. We have been asked to do a traffic calming analysis, not a full roadway closure analysis, but a calming analysis. So what that involves is we put the tubes in the road, and then we measure the speed at which the cars go through the tubes, and we collect and analyze that data. We also collect some crash data. We assemble that information, and then we see if there's any kind of form of traffic calming that is warranted by those studies. That's a bit of a different analysis than we would do for a full roadway closure. If we're looking at a full roadway closure, we'd be looking at the whole network of roadway around Gain Street, surrounding roadways, how fast the traffic goes, the turning movements associated with it. So that would be a different level of analysis. We should have the traffic calming study done within about two weeks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, question. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Karen. My concern with the study is that traffic is light over there now because, you know, summertime and students are not there. And I'm wondering if we did that study when it's more densely populated, the results would be different, I'm sure. And it sounds like what Matt was referring to was that there was some activity, there was a game going on over there, and what could have happened. So is there any way for us to, I don't know, since we're doing the study now and it's about to be over in a couple of weeks, is there any way to perhaps delay it until we can have it more densely populated during events or what have you there?
Mr. Mayor, may I weigh in? And I'd like maybe Eric to answer this. Commissioner, that's a great point. Now, we didn't just start, though, so I suspect we've captured a lot of that into semester activity, which is good for our analysis. I don't want to delay the analysis, but your point is well-made of, you know, if we don't have adequate information, we totally understand the seasonality of the schools. We would want to get more information. But Eric, can you remind us when we started gathering traffic information?
Yeah, so the traffic data has already been collected. We're working on analyzing that, finalizing those results. And all that was completed prior to the school getting out prior towards the end.
Okay. Very good.
Commissioner, I do believe we have good information to work with, but if it turns out we don't, we'll certainly look for more.
All right, thank you. Great. Any other questions? Comments? Yeah, Commissioner Matlow.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, I got you. Just a second, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like us to bring something back to consider, whether it's the full road closure or at least the temporary bollards on high-end weekends and game days. My concern with the traffic study is are we measuring the amount of pedestrians that are going across those crossings on event weekends? So people may not be speeding regularly down Madison Street, but we know on game weekend there might be thousands of pedestrians crossing those crossings or standing in the roadway, which is kind of an anomaly for the normal activities. Because I don't think a speeding problem on Madison may not be the problem if it's just one car that's the problem in an area where there's thousands of pedestrians on high-end weekends. I wonder how we can look at it through kind of that lens, whether it's... And I'm just talking about between Lorraine and Woodward, not the entirety of the street. So, Mr. Manager?
Sure. There's a motion on the table to bring an item back. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I can share a little information on that, on road closures today. I think that could be helpful. That section of roadway does get closed fairly regularly during these football game weekends, kind of busy weekends at the request of the businesses. They work directly with our police department and our underground utilities as it relates to our roads, and it gets closed. That's done so in a very manual way, of course, and the businesses pay for the cost of that closure. So that happens. I think the businesses anticipate the volume of pedestrian traffic and activities, and for the safety of the pedestrians, it does get closed already. It's not, it doesn't use bollards. It uses barriers and cars and things of this nature. So that does occur already. It's not only, it's not open all the time. And so when those events are anticipated, the businesses pay the cost to close those roads.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor? I've got Commissioner Porter in line, and then I'm coming to you, Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, Karen, if you had time to look into what a roadway closure analysis would cost?
Commissioner, that would be, I have looked into that. It would be a combination of work that would be done by our in-house staff, and then most likely we would end up having to hire a consultant to do the traffic counts. That's something that we typically would require a consultant to do. So that might be in the area of about $30,000 roughly.
Could you restate your motion, please?
Motion, I believe Commissioner Matlow is to bring an item back, exploring the opportunities of a permanent closure or some type of temporary closure.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem?
I wanted to ask that included in that agenda item that we would look at the different, the cost for those different types of things. Because I'm thinking, what was it, you asked for bollards that could go up? I couldn't imagine that would be kind of expensive. And we also want to be careful that whatever we do in this area, we can also apply to other areas where congestion occurs. Because if we think about, not just in College Town, but in other places around FSU and around college campuses where we've had some pedestrian fatalities, we are looking at other ways to try to prevent that there. We want to make sure that we keep in mind that we can't just be focused on one issue in one spot. We've got to be focused on, you know, the community when we have these things occur. And whatever we do, if we do it in one place, we ought to be able to do it in other places, or we need to find something that's going to be cost-efficient that we can do in other places. I'm thinking also about when we've done road closures for French Town Rising, we've done road closures for parades, and we've done, you know, those kinds of things. I know right now we're kind of doing those road closures manually as the mayor, as the city manager has said. So I think we want to be very careful when we start going to maybe some of the high-end ticket items. So please include that in the agenda item, you know, in the exploration and discovery of what that would cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously four zero. We are back on my time. I don't have anything else, so we're going to pass over to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to do my time and Commissioner Richardson's time. How about that? We have been asked, and I know, Mayor, you've had some of this conversation as well, dealing with the Human Rights Resolution. We've been asked to consider joining the county and doing a Human Rights Resolution. And I see our friend Marcus in the room. I met with him recently, and we were revisiting the possibility of doing something like that. So I wanted to bring forward that I could support doing a resolution regarding the Human Rights Treaty and joining the county in that regard if I could get the support of our commissioners and the mayor to do so. And Marcus agreed to help us in crafting a draft or something. I know the county commission has done it a couple of years ago, I believe. So I wanted to just bring it forward and see if we see any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't be able to join them in the Human Rights Resolution, drafting a Human Rights Resolution.
Sure, you want to bring an item back?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We want to bring an item back, of course, but I wanted to first test the temperament, the temperature on that and see where it would go. So I'm assuming Madam Attorney will come from your office?
It could, but I'll be honest and say I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. So I'd want to understand that. I mean, we could bring an item back, but I would just want to understand what that exactly looks like and...
Absolutely.
Whether it would be legal or permissible.
Okay. I'll be happy to work with their office, gather information, to help with that. All right?
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Is there another discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously four zero.
Okay. Secondly, next Tuesday is May 20th. As we know, we celebrate emancipation here in the city of Tallahassee, and so the city of Tallahassee employees, you have a day off, in case you didn't remember. And for county employees, they also have a day off. So that means that our facilities and everything will be closed, and I'm hoping that we all will join in in the celebration. There's a list of activities that are taking place to commemorate the freeing of slaves here in the city of Tallahassee. And I thought that it was real appropriate today to have our brothers from the Micasuki and Seminole Tribe being referenced here because they're, you know, we have some commonalities. And so just a reminder of that. Also, on May 23rd, right here in Chambers, we will also be commemorating the Tallahassee Bus Boycott, which took place also in May, on May 26th. But we're going to do it here on May 23rd here in Chambers. It's open to the public, and our folks are welcome to attend. And finally, congratulations to our graduates, those who graduated college, and for those who are getting ready to graduate high school, congratulations. Let's get to work. The city of Tallahassee has some vacancies applied, so we can get out our parents' pockets, and let's get to work. And as your representative for the Florida League of Cities, we, one of the initiatives of our this year, President of the Florida League of Cities is Florida City Jobs. And we're also, there's a scholarship that is, I'm on the scholarship committee, that will be offered to graduates with criteria. But go to the Florida League of Cities website and get that information, and let's get to work. We've gotten the education, now let's go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just request one item from the speaker earlier. Can we bring an information item back on the Clean Energy Plan? I know we've had a lot of successes over the last few years getting federal dollars and those sorts of things, just to show everything we've accomplished since the beginning and maybe lay out the milestones we're looking for in the future.
Great idea. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously four zero.
Well for me.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing, and I'm here in Clemson, South Carolina, celebrating my dad's 65th birthday, so I just wanted to wish my father, John Porter, a happy birthday.
Excellent.
Happy birthday.
All right. Actually, I did forget one thing, and I apologize. Next year, I hope that you all will join me, and I hope this becomes a tradition that our community should put together a delegation and do an annual trip down to visit the Micasuki Tribe in South Florida, and if possible, the Seminole Tribe as well in South Florida. By invitation of the chair and the leadership, I had the opportunity to go down two weeks ago. It was an incredible opportunity, a moving opportunity, highly educational opportunity, reminding me of the strong bonds between the Micasuki Tribe in particular and the city of Tallahassee. If you ever have the opportunity, highly encourage you to go visit. It was... Hope Commissioner Richardson feels better once again. The colleagues, we have a public hearing. Here's what I'd like to do. This 16.01 is the transmittal. I imagine if we get a bulk of speakers, they will be on that particular one. I'm going to check with Mr. Cook on 02, 03, 04. If we don't have any speakers on those three items, I would like to take those up first to ensure that we get to them and are able to take care of the business before we hear all the speakers on 16.01. An interesting situation, I have to walk out at 7:45 to go make a presentation at 8 o'clock tonight. So we start the public hearing at 6:00. I want to be transparent and let you know. That's going to give us an hour and 45 minutes. Depending on how many public speakers we have will depend on our time. Working with the city attorney to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak, and we have the opportunity to conduct the business. Because of the unique situation, when I leave at 7:45, we lose quorum in chambers, and we will have to gavel out. So I just want to be upfront as we move into the public hearing so we're all on the same page. Any questions? Okay, cool. So we will be back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing, and we have four items. We stand in recess. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It is 6 o'clock on Wednesday, May 14th. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. We have four items that are before us. Colleagues, before we start, let me entertain another motion to allow Commissioner Porter to participate telephonically...
So moved.
Second.
...in the public hearing, probably made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 3-0. Commissioner Porter, are you with us? Commissioner Porter, are you with us? Okay, Commissioner Porter's logged in but is not engaged right now. Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, good evening, welcome. We've got four items on the agenda tonight. We're going to take them in a different order because we have three items that we should be able to move forward with quite quickly, and then we will take up 16.01, the transmittal public hearing, which the largest majority of you are here to speak upon. So it's a little bit of an interesting meeting, and we're going to do things a little differently in consultation with the manager, the city attorney, and with the treasurer clerk. As you can see, there are only three of us at the day this evening. Commissioner Porter is out of town and participating via phone. Commissioner Richardson is not here, and we hope he feels better and has a quick recovery. As a result, there are three of us, and our bylaw state that we have to have a quorum in chambers in order to move forward. Now, it's important that we take care of all the business this evening. I announced earlier this evening I have a hard stop with the previous engagement at 7:45 that I have to leave chambers. When I leave chambers, that means we will no longer have a quorum in chambers. Means we have an hour and 45 minutes to take care of the people's business. Having done so, this is how we're going to handle this. In consultation with the city attorney's office and the manager and the clerk, we are going to take all public comment, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak. Traditionally, we give three minutes per speaker. Because of the volume, we are going to allow a minute and a half per speaker this evening. Otherwise, we will simply have to have a special meeting on another day if everybody would like to have their full three minutes, because we will not have a quorum at 7:45. So to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to speak and that we could take care of this issue this evening and not at a special meeting, everyone will be granted a minute and a half to be able to speak. Now, Madam Attorney, are we in the proper format to be able to do so as long as everybody has the opportunity to speak that wants to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions? Okay, let's move forward, and we're going to start with 16.02. 16.02.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry.
16.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.02 is a public hearing of ordinance number 25-0-09, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land map designation from residential preservation land use category to the suburban land use category for .60 acres at the intersection of Bradford Road and East Delview Drive, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option number one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 25-0-09.
Okay. Ms... And Artie White is here to answer any questions, correct? Thank you, Mr. White. All right, Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have on this item?
One speaker.
One speaker. That speaker will have a minute and a half. Will you please announce who the speaker is?
Speaker is Spencer Hopkins. Spencer Hopkins. And for speakers, there's a light in front of the mayor that will be green when you begin your comments. You're going to see it turn yellow, but that's going to, when it turns yellow, that's the expiration of your time. The lights work in one-minute increments, and so the yellow is normally your warning light, but that this evening, that, when it turns yellow, you'll be at a minute and a half.
I'm going to work with everybody. We're not going to do a hard cutoff. We're going to try to give everybody the opportunity. But your name and address for the record, please.
Spencer Hopkins, 2019, East W Drive. I'm not sure if I signed up for the right thing, but I'm speaking against rezoning our first two houses for office residential, because I think it's, our street is pretty unique. And I know that the last meeting, they talked about making a corridor down Bradford, a business corridor where the first houses were rezoned office residential. But it's not like a strip mall where you can walk from one place to another. The corridor is just a thing that, you know, the city has, has thought was a good idea. But what I'm trying to prevent is a future creep of anything coming into our neighborhood. So I'm, I would like to vote against the ordinance or the rezoning of our street to office residential.
Excellent. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was the only speaker on this item, Mayor.
All right. Artie, you want to come walk us through this real quick, please?
Absolutely. So this item and the next item kind of go hand in hand. One is a comp plan amendment, the other one is a rezoning. The applicant who came in and submitted an application requested that their property, which is at the intersection of Delview and Bradford Road, if you're familiar with where like Planet Fitness and the Japanese Steakhouse is there, it's located there. The property, and then the property across the street, both the ones that touch Bradford Road are the only two properties that are residential preservation along Bradford Road. The other ones are suburban with office residential one zoning. And so the applicant requested that suburban land use with office residential, which would be, make every property that touches Bradford Road the same.
Any questions, Mr. White? All right. Colleagues, looking for direction, comments?
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
I'm sorry, Mr. White. Can you speak to the speaker's concern about that land use creeping further into the neighborhood?
Right. So we looked at the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan for consistency and kind of what the surrounding uses are. The office residential is a transition zoning between commercial uses and residential, and so being located here is appropriate. But if it went into the neighborhood, it wouldn't be a transition anymore, and really wouldn't be appropriate unless the rest of the neighborhood decided to go to office residential one.
So the likelihood of the next property down Delview asking for a change would not be likely, or not be likely to be recommended?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'll move acceptance.
All right, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Commissioner Porter, are you with us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously four zero. We're on item number 16.03. Madam Attorney.
Item number 16.03 is the public hearing of ordinance number 25-Z-10, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land use, designating land as office residential one, OR1, on the official zoning map from residential preservation one, RP1, on .60 acres at the intersection of Bradford Road and East Delview Drive, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 25-Z-10. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system. This item is related to the previous one.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one comment, or one speaker on this item, Ashley Hopkins.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ashley Hopkins, 2019, East Delview Drive. I just want to say I'm discerning to hear about this rezoning on this property. The property owner is a single mother with a high schooler, and her property is being reassessed against her will. She does not want her house to be rezoned, but it's being rezoned regardless, or it's been approved to be rezoned. I don't think that's right. I think she owns that property. I think she has a right to say what she wants it to be rezoned. And it just is kind of a trust issue that, you know, I bought my house, under the zoning I bought it, and the fact that somebody, a business who doesn't even own the property, can come in and rezone my home is deeply upsetting, and I hate seeing this happen in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
We've, so there are the two properties. One, the applicant came in. The other property, we asked if the person wanted to be included. They said yes. They came to the public hearing at the planning commission and said they did not want to. So we reached out to them and said, we're happy to exclude you. And they actually said, no, we changed our mind. We do want to be included. So all the properties are owned by people who do want to be included in the zoning.
Okay. Want to make sure that we're not rezoning someone's property against their will, correct? Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Move for option one.
I'll second it, but just for...
Okay. Motion, motion on the table by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Sure. Can you elaborate? I'm, I'm trying to figure out the difference between what the speaker said and what you said, and do we know what the change of opinion? They weren't the initial applicant, one of the property owners?
Right. So the initial applicant is the property on the west side of Delview Drive. That would have left one property in residential preservation. So we reached out to that property owner and asked if they wanted to be included. They initially said, sure, we don't have any problem with that. Then when we were at the planning commission meeting, they actually got up and said, oh, well, we don't want to be included. And so after that, we called that property owner and said, we're happy to take you out of it. If you change your mind, that's totally fine. And they said, no, they reconsidered. They do, in fact, want to be included, so...
And that was the last communication with the property owner?
Right, right. Because we were more than happy to take them out if they didn't want to be included, but they were affirmed that they did want to be included.
Okay. I'll support the item. I think the Bradford Road corridor, it makes sense and is consistent for that zoning to match. I understand the concerns about neighborhood creep, which I don't think would be likely in the area, just the nature of all the other offices along Bradford. It makes sense if that's the use the property owners wanted. If they didn't want it, it would be different, obviously. As a property owner, they do have ultimate control over what can be done there, as long as they own it. I'll support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any other comment? All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously four zero. We're on item number 16.04, Mr. Clerk, Madam Attorney, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.04 is the public hearing of resolution number 25-R-19, a resolution abandoning a portion of the right-of-way known as Apple Yard Drive located north of Tennessee Street, just south of Mission Road in the city of Tallahassee, Leon County, Florida. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt resolution number 25-R-19, abandoning an unimproved portion of right-of-way known as Apple Yard Drive.
All right. How many public speakers do we have on this item?
Roger Nguyen is here, available for questions. Otherwise, no speakers.
Okay. Colleagues?
Move for option one.
Second.
Option one's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously four zero. Okay. Last item before us is 16.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.01 is the transmittal public hearing on the comprehensive plan update to the future land use and mobility elements. The recommended action is option one, conduct the city commission transmittal public hearing on amendments to the land use and mobility elements, and transmit the proposed land use and mobility element to the state and review agencies for review. Mr. Artie White and the planning department staff will present this item and are available to address questions.
All right. So Mr. White, you're going to present, and then we'll see if there's any clarifying questions that need to take place. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have on this item?
25.
25, okay. Excellent. So let's move forward. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I will try to move through this presentation very quickly in the interest of time. Tonight is the transmittal hearing. This is where you would vote to submit the proposed land use and mobility element to the state and regional review agencies. They have a 30-day review period, and then we would come back to you at your August meeting for the adoption, should you transmit it tonight. The proposed land use and mobility element that's before you takes a balanced approach to growth and development. We're accommodating proposed population, or the projected population growth while protecting the environment. We're looking at increasing density while still protecting neighborhood character, and protecting neighborhood character while avoiding sprawl, promoting affordability, encouraging multimodal transportation, all things that are really dependent upon density to achieve. When we started this process, we wanted to make sure that we were reflecting the values of the community. So we went through an effort, got a lot of public engagement, looked at planning documents that had been done recently, and developed what we call the vision framework or community values. We recognize that we're never going to get 100% consensus on all things growth and development, but we do recognize that we, as a community, do have values that we generally all share: environmental stewardship, conscientious growth, community connectivity, diversity, community focus, and prosperity. And these are things that really were on the forefront as we were developing goals, objectives, and policies. So all the goals, objectives, and policies that you have before you are intended just to move us closer to these community values. We did significant amount of public engagement. Your agenda materials cover that. There was a lot of public engagement that developed those community values, and then also in both the development and the continual refinement of the goals, objectives, and policies. So we have incorporated public engagement and the public input throughout the process and have proposed land use and mobility element that reflects that effort. Key component of the land use element is the future land use map. And a couple of things you'll notice when you see the future land use map is, what we have proposed is organized by community context area. That is, you'll see natural areas defined, rural areas defined, suburban, urban, and then some special districts that don't fit neatly in a category. Those are things like power plants and airports. It also is a balanced approach, primarily focused on infill development, a little bit of outward expansion, but the main focus is infill development, and that's in line with that environmental stewardship, community value. And some of the boundaries have changed slightly. So if you look at the rural communities, the urban services area, and the lake protection land use, there were many cases where that split a parcel, and in some cases, actually just kind of went through the middle of someone's home. And so we tried to adjust it to the closest parcel line or natural feature. And so that's why you don't see significant changes in these. It was mostly just kind of correcting those boundaries. So this is the future land use map that the city commission votes on. You'll see that this is the area where we have downtown, urban area, and several distinct suburban neighborhoods. Last night, the county commission voted on transmitting this future land use map. The part that's grayed out is everything within city limits. And when you look at the county's future land use map, that's where we see the large natural areas, the rural areas, some of the rural communities, all of the rural communities, and then a couple of suburban neighborhoods as well. And when you put the two together, you get to see kind of visually our growth management strategy, which is focused on protecting those large natural areas, protecting the rural areas, and really focusing growth in the urban and suburban areas. Through this process, we've met with the local planning agency multiple times, had several workshops with them, and along the way, we incorporated their input. And so the proposed land use and mobility element includes the input from the local planning agency. And ultimately, on April 1st, they've voted unanimously to recommend approval of the land use and mobility element. We had a joint workshop, city and county commissions, on February 25th. At that workshop, there were a couple of key discussions that came up. The first one, incentivizing development on major roadways and gateways, and so that's putting more density and intensity on the major corridors, coupled with design standards to make sure that we're getting quality development on those gateway corridors. Addressing non-conforming uses in the lake protection land use category, that's existing non-conforming uses that were developed before we had the stringent water quality standards. So we're trying to incentivize and encourage them to redevelopment, to redevelop or generally come up to the current high water quality standards that we have, in line with protecting the lake. A lot of conversation on Woodville, that's entirely in the county, but looking at promoting growth and development within Woodville proper. Higher densities on the south side in alignment with the south side action plan, so increasing quality development there while still trying to avoid gentrification. And then parking minimums. The comp plan itself doesn't include parking minimums, but we have policies that provide a framework for either eliminating parking requirements altogether, or becoming more flexible, or overall just kind of reducing them. So the comp plan doesn't include the parking standards, but provides policies for there to be flexibility when the code addresses those. The next steps, so tonight is the transmittal hearing. The county transmitted last night, and so we would submit this to the state. They have the 30-day review, as I mentioned, and that's an opportunity for them to provide comments to us. We'll address those comments. The adoption hearings would be August 20th for the city commission, July 8th for the county commission. And then after that, we would look at updates to the land development code. And, you know, we always have a process for amending the comprehensive plan. So as much as I would like to think the work we did is perfect, I recognize that that's probably not the case, if I'm being honest. And so if there's anything that needs to come back and be corrected, we can do that as any, part of any comp plan cycle. Couple of key issues. So last night, the county commission voted to transmit the proposed land use and mobility element to the state. They added two minor changes. One is policy 1.4.1. They added a statement that priority planting sites for urban forests, which is the topic of that policy, noting that it would improve wildlife habitat. And so that's one change that was made. And then policy 1.4.2, also related to urban forests, they added a statement that our tree species lists, those are the lists that we use for determining what trees get planted, would not include invasive exotic species and would promote native species. This is stuff that we already do, is consistent with our urban forest master plan. So at your direction, we would include those two edits as well in your transmittal. You don't have to. The city and county's transmittals are independent, but I think those two changes are in line with our practices and our urban forest master plan. They are sending a letter to the city to specifically ask about a policy related to Midtown Sense of Place. That could be included. I would not recommend it. We have not done that for any other sense of place plan. We have not done that for any other neighborhood plan. And just as a matter of the commission approving a plan, we would bring back anything that needed to be updated with the comp plan as part of the process, is just kind of what we do. And then the other main issue that we've heard in the community is concern about the land use that we call urban residential preservation. I think there's been a little bit of misconception on it and a little bit of confusing zoning and land use. And so that specific land use category applies to our in-town neighborhoods, and the land use category itself allows higher density than what would currently be allowed. So it would be going from six units per acre to 12. It would also potentially allow non-residential uses, small scale, the maximum size is 2,500 square feet. The way the policy is written is that if you were in urban residential preservation, you would have up to six units per acre, no commercial uses. If your neighborhood wanted to opt into allowing more diversity of the housing stock and allowing those non-residential uses, you, as a neighborhood, would develop a land use plan for the neighborhood, and the implementation of that plan would then allow it. So if you're an urban neighborhood and you don't want to change, your zoning could stay the same. You would not change. There are a couple of neighborhoods that have expressed a desire to allow those additional small-scale commercial uses, other uses. The policy gives us the flexibility to work with them to accomplish that. So in effect, we actually have both added additional protections for the in-town neighborhoods. So in effect, we actually have both added additional protections for the in-town neighborhoods. Today, you don't have to do a neighborhood plan to be considered for a comp plan amendment or rezoning. This adds an extra protection for in-town neighborhoods that want to stay the same. At the same time, it adds more flexibility for the neighborhoods that do want to see small incremental change. So we're both protecting the character of existing neighborhoods more and helping the neighborhoods that want to see change, and we've accomplished that with this one policy. So the recommended action tonight is option one, that would transmit it to the state. We would address comments and bring it back to you in August for adoption.
All right, real quick, colleagues, Commissioner Matt Loeb, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Porter, any questions or clarification for Artie before we get into public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I have one question, Artie. In the, where you were saying that the density could increase from six to 12, six to eight to 12, do we have any neighborhoods who are already doing that, and by us adopting and transmitting, will help to bring them into compliance?
We have. One of the main things that we're addressing is when the Frenchtown neighborhood, the Bond neighborhood, and the Griffin Heights each did their respective neighborhood first plans, they acknowledged that they have diverse array of housing, so not just single-family detached, but they also have duplexes and triplexes, and those actually hit those density numbers. And they also noted that they have small cafes and daycares and things like that that they want to keep as part of their neighborhood. And so this would allow us to work with them directly on zoning that allows those uses to bring them into conformity. Providence is currently working on their neighborhood first plan, is my understanding. I don't know if they're going to want something similar, but if they do, happy to work with them. If they want to not do that, happy to help them stay the same.
And by doing this, this helps to bring our infill in the city into kind of a uniformity of how we grow?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Matt Loeb for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll say most of my questions for after speakers, but just for clarification on the neighborhoods that have been added to the new urban residential preservation. If the neighborhoods weren't engaged in that conversation directly, how was it selected? Some neighborhoods were included versus others, say Los Robles versus Benton Hills?
Yeah, we looked at the historic development pattern of those communities. Generally speaking, the neighborhoods that were within the multimodal transportation district are the ones that were developed in the 20s, 30s, 40s. My neighborhood was built in the 40s. It is proposed to move to urban residential preservation. And so once you kind of move outside that, you actually see the development patterns change. You don't see the mixture of housing types as much. You start seeing lower densities. And so it wasn't just because it was in the multimodal transportation district, but that's where we started seeing a change in development patterns.
And did we communicate with neighborhood associations and presidents prior to the change of their neighborhood?
We did, as well as the Alliance of Tallahassee.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to please work with me, okay? We're going to give everybody the opportunity to speak in just a second.
Yes, we were very closely with the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods and specific neighborhood associations. I know that I've worked with Ms. Randy Denker, who's the president of the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association. And I got a couple of emails from people in the Los Robles neighborhood. I provided response explaining this to them as well. And so to the extent possible, we've tried to reach out and engage people as much as we could.
I think I'll say the rest of my questions for after.
Excellent. So we've had a lot of communication from Los Robles. You want to speak specifically to that neighborhood?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, you know, Los Robles is a neighborhood, it's adjacent to the midtown area. It's, you know, developed over time, kind of one of the older neighborhoods, which gives it a lot of character. And, you know, if this is a neighborhood that wants to stay exactly as they are, they simply don't do a neighborhood land use plan and don't request a change, and they can keep their existing zoning and they stay exactly as they are today.
So there will be no density impacts?
You would have to change zoning to allow higher densities?
There will be no business impacts inside the neighborhood?
Their zoning currently does not allow any commercial uses, so unless they decide to do a neighborhood plan, a land use plan that allows that, then they would keep their existing zoning that does not allow that.
I see friends from Benton. I see friends from Old Town. Would the same go for those neighborhoods as well?
It would.
No density impacts for the action that might take tonight transmitting?
That is correct. To affect any change in density, you have to implement the land use category through zoning. And we put in the comp plan that you can't go to a higher than six units per acre, which is the land use today. You can't go to a zoning district higher than six units per acre or that allows non-resi-- the commercial retail uses unless your neighborhood does a neighborhood land use plan.
And no commercial impact outside of what is currently allowed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure there'll be a lot more questions, Artie. Stick around. Let's go to public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got 26 speakers at this point. As you noted earlier, minute and a half for each speaker. We'll begin with Ramona Abernathy-Payne, followed by Vivian Young.
Great. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. In the 52 years that I've been in Tallahassee, I've lived downtown in Lafayette Park, on Jim Lee Road, in Lehigh, and for the last 40 years in the Indian Head-Lehigh neighborhood. I see the need for infill and know of suitable parcels for small developments that can support this end. I have also seen small developers denied the ability to develop these parcels because they cannot afford to bring streets up to code or build out water and sewer services. I've seen small developers be unsuccessful because of lack of services while these same services are provided to larger developers at taxpayers' expense. If you want to support urban infill, you must support and provide roads and utilities needed. You must also keep up the facilities in existing neighborhoods, whether maintaining roads, providing sidewalks, or fixing flooding. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Next speaker is Vivian Young, and then Jay Flightman. Mayor and commissioners, I'll also point out, we did have, I think, two individuals who were not able to be here and submitted a written comment, which we'll make a part of the record.
Okay, great. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Vivian Young, AICP, and I live at 411 Oakland Avenue. I'm here on behalf of 1,000 Friends of Florida, which is a statewide organization that promotes sound planning and growth management. I'm going to keep my comments very brief. Tonight, you are being asked to adopt a legal document that will direct where and how Tallahassee will develop for the next 25 years. If amended and approved, it will govern all major development decisions in this community for the next quarter of a century. I am somewhat dismayed that this is one of the few opportunities that citizens have to address you on this issue and that their time has been cut in half. I do not think this is appropriate, considering this is such a major and important decision that you will be making. I strongly urge you to hold a special meeting on this, even if it means that a lot of people here have to come back again so that you can thoroughly hear what we have to say, because there are a number of significant concerns about this proposal, perhaps the least of which being that the community has not had a chance to engage in this, that neighborhood association presidents are saying they were not contacted. There are a lot of issues, and we strongly urge you to hold a special meeting and not move forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jay Flightman, and then Nada Pofak.
I was going to have to come up here, and I really want to waive my right to speak. I just oppose--
You should be able to pull the microphone down. That'll make it easier for you.
I oppose, I agree with everything the lady before me said, and I oppose the proposed changes to the urban residential preservation. We want to keep our neighborhood Lafayette Park that you mentioned just as it is. We don't want any changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Nada Pofak? Nadi?
Nada Pofel. And thank you very much for allowing us the one and a half minute, which I think is outrageous. I think I already used it. But anyway, I live, Nada Pofel, from Woodlands Drive, 1143 Myers Park Drive. Woodlands Drive is a residential, single-family, park-like setting. Portions of the neighborhood is in a historic preservation, I mean designation. We are not interested in increasing the density or allowing mixed use in our neighborhood. So I strongly oppose changing from residential preservation to urban residential preservation. We have invested money to improve and maintain our property so we can enjoy our retirement peacefully. I'm not looking forward to some business. I don't oppose businesses, but a business next to my home, Awawa, where they will be parking all over my yard or take my parking space. I strongly oppose, and I oppose this whole meeting because you're not giving us enough time. I also cede whatever time I have to the next speaker, if I could. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Haven Cook, and then Marsha Rule. Mr. Mayor, to the last speaker's comment, speakers are not able to cede time to other speakers, so if you want to use your minute and a half, you may, but you can't defer it to someone else.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I got here tonight, I filled out a speaker card, and I clearly wrote on it that my issue is the rezoning of Delview Drive property. And when I asked the guy what agenda item number it was, he told me to write 16.01, and it was really 16.02. So we're past that. I had some comments I wanted to make, but I'm going to skip them because I've actually already submitted them. I'm opposed to that. And 20, I've lived in, on, at 310 North Delview Drive for 29 years, and 20 years ago this August, we were here in this same room because the person who owned that property applied for rezoning. 30 of us from the neighborhood showed up in opposition, and not one person spoke for it, and it didn't pass. So we were lucky that the commission listened to us and let us keep the neighborhood in its quiet residential state. And I just hope that, and, you know, you all will reconsider that and not make any zoning changes for Delview Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me apologize. We obviously made a mistake by informing you on the wrong number and did not give you the opportunity to speak at the appropriate time, and I'm sorry about that. We'll try to do better. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Marsha Rule.
Marsha Rule, hi. I've lived in Woodland Drives at 1207 Maple Drive for 35-plus years. My understanding is that our current residential preservation category is to preserve single-family residential character from incompatible land uses. So basically, what's going on here tonight is you intend to make a radical, or you're thinking about making a radical change of introducing incompatible uses that are, or uses that are incompatible with the residential neighborhood character. So I kind of think that before I am told that there's going to be a quadruplex next door, or a parking lot over there, or that my grandson cannot walk across the street anymore because there's increased traffic, we should have more voice in the process, and that has not happened. A couple of other comments. Quadrupling density on our current streets is going to be busy. It's going to be degrading to the character of the neighborhood. And of course, once you start introducing businesses and more housing and quadruplex and quadruplex, those effects will cascade over time. They'll affect our property and our property value. I understand if there's a need for more housing and more commercial uses, but let's have some workshops about that and get some engagement. Maybe we'll agree with you. Also, there was some talk about opting into some of the neighborhood changes. Well, what about allowing neighborhoods to opt into the urban residential preservation? Don't push us in there. The neighborhoods that want to do that, hooray, let them do that. Let us opt out if, as a neighborhood, we want to. And finally--
Minute and a half.
There was a discussion about zoning, you know, setting up a conflict between the land use plan and zoning is just fighting down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Marsha Turner. Marsha Turner is next, and then Alex Duh.
Name and address for the record, please.
Marsha Turner, 410 Harris Street, 32308. I tip my hat to you, no disrespect, but I'll keep it on. Proud of Old Town Neighborhood, and I am the president currently of the Old Town Neighborhood Association. I got a surprise tonight when I heard about a new proposal that was made that I think, I understand, Old Town will not be required--
Correct.
--to increase density. And I hope I'm understanding that correctly, and it is a formal, integrated piece of the changes in the comp plan. So I'm confirming that statement formally. I do have a concern regarding that. We have an eclectic neighborhood, which we are very, very proud of. It's also, at the same time, a historic downtown neighborhood. We want to maintain, in fact, the mission statement of my neighborhood association is to preserve, protect the quality of life, the integrity, and the beauty of the Old Town neighborhood. That's what we're all about.
You're at a minute and a half.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a yellow light.
Yeah, which means--
Is that the hook?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Wrap up your comment, that'd be great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just have one more sentence.
Please wrap up.
Thank you. Adding zoning density, in many cases--
Dr. Match, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
It's just a few more words.
Sure, go ahead. Please finish. Please finish. Please finish.
Provides opportunities for investors, speculators, and absentee owners to dare tear down existing homes and replacing them with new denser housing types. We see this as a bug, not a feature.
Thank you.
And I leave you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker, please.
Alex Duh, followed by Nicolet Constantino.
Good evening.
Name and address for--
Alex Duh, I live at 901 Buena Vista Drive. I think, I know many of you, I'm a very active member of the community, and I actually learned about all of this just last week. And I feel like if it got past me, then it's definitely gotten past my neighbors, and it's definitely gotten past a lot of Tallahassee residents. I understand that, you know, social media was used to advertise this a little bit, and that certain neighborhoods reached out to, but I feel like there's a lot more input that could come from residents. To make sure that we get this thing right, and actually, I'd like to give an example from my own neighborhood, which is a smaller neighborhood, house is built in the 40s and 50s mostly, and it has, you know, a lot of great character, but we've been lumped in in this plan with a bunch of apartments to the west of us. So this is a picture of my house. That's your quintessential Tallahassee house, live oaks, you know? This is what we're put in with in this plan. So I would just ask that I and other residents be given an opportunity to work with staff to carve these things out a little bit better. If we could just take a step back and have some more workshops, I think that'd be really appreciated. And, you know, I think everyone here understands that this doesn't change zoning overnight, but this is an important document that is-- but this is an important document that is the vision of where we want to grow to and how we do that. And that is going to influence, you know, zoning petitions in the future, and I think that.
You're at one and a half minutes.
These people would be fine adding a few more stories to the top of their apartments, and we could preserve this character at the same time and grow.
Thank you.
And what neighborhood are you with?
I'm in between Griffin Heights and High Road. So we're just three or four small roads, and I think that's one of the issues, is that, you know, we don't have a larger neighborhood association. We're more, we're more closely aligned with what the houses are like in Griffin Heights, but we don't really have.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
This is Nicolette Costantino, followed by Pierce Rawling.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Nicolette Costantino, 945 Alachua Avenue. I have been a proud resident of Tallahassee for 15 years, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and a proud homeowner in Old Town Neighborhood for nearly eight years. I would like to champion Tallahassee's motto, "Pretty Unexpected." And while I appreciate what I hope is a great deal of truth in Mr. White's update that our neighborhoods would have the option to adopt this plan, I want to speak on general principle against such a plan because Old Town, among many other neighborhoods, emulates these qualities that our capital city boasts. It's the reason why I was drawn to purchase a home there. Quiet, tree-lined roads, historic homes, magnolia trees, birdsong, bike riding, dog walking, children playing, gardens, and these are just some treasures that will be put out of reach once in the shadow of apartment complexes and businesses. The introduction of these types of buildings into a neighborhood like mine significantly decreases habitat for birds and other wildlife. It increases traffic, especially detrimental on the street that connects to my driveway, Cherry Laurel, which can only accommodate one car going one way at a time. And more traffic also raises safety concerns for residents, including senior citizens and children who regularly walk and ride bikes. And also, adding more density to the neighborhood invites increased noise and crime concerns. I ask that you please protect the virtues of which Tallahassee is proud in our neighborhoods like Old Town.
You're at one and a half minutes.
Which is an oasis, and keeping it pretty unexpected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Pierce Rawling is the next speaker, and then Mike Brazin.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, all. Yes, my name is Pierce Rawling. I reside at 1320 Gulf Terrace Drive, and I am president of the Myers-Poehck Neighborhood Association, but I'm also representing the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. I was going to speak on the proposed update to the comprehensive plan and the new land use map, but given the lack of time, I'm sure you're glad to hear that I defer to Rosa Morgan's comments. She will be.
Our next speaker, please.
Mike Brazin, and then Damon Victor.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Mike Brazin. I live at 1401 North Randolph Circle, and I am representing ATN tonight. But I'll be deferring my time to Rosa Morgan because it's really been inappropriately shortened.
Mr. Brazin, I encourage you to go ahead. We're not, we're not banking time for speakers, so you have a minute and a half. Okay. Our next speaker, please.
Damon, Damon Victor is our next speaker.
Okay. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Brazin, Mr. Brazin, if you don't mind, I'll be more than happy to talk to you later. Our next speaker, please.
My name's Damon Victor. I'm the president of the Parkside Park Terrace Neighborhood Association. I live at 2212 Joiner Drive. We're also a member of the ATN. I was not contacted by the city, or the county, or the planning department, or Mr. Arti and his staff. I wouldn't have known about it if it wasn't for the Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods. You know, we barely had enough time as a neighborhood to get in our quest for the changes to the comp plan, and we have no idea if you have had time to consider them. Ninety seconds is ridiculous. We need more time. We need more time for this process. And I'm gonna quit talking right now and let Rosa Ramona, Ramona Morgan, Ramos Morgan, excuse me, speak for us. And I, I think ninety seconds is ridiculous. This whole process speeds up like a chain going around your finger, and now tonight it's gone even faster. And it's, it's not right, and it's disrespectful to the people.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Wendy Gray, followed by Rosa Ramos Morgan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm familiar with the process. Wendy Gray, 1047 Myers Park Drive. I'm here tonight with the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. I strongly, strongly object to the shortening of time for speakers and for commission discussion on this item, and I defer the rest of my comments to Ms. Morgan.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rosa Ramos Morgan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Rosa Ramos Morgan, 400 Capital Circle Southeast. We went to, I'm representing the Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods. We would like to first go on record, as we understand during Arti's presentation, we have a different understanding regarding a neighborhood's ability to change zoning. So we would like to discuss that further with you at some time. As you know, ATN continues to advocate for policies and initiatives that protect and enhance Tallahassee neighborhoods, and as we have seen demonstrated tonight, we believe that citizen participation in the city's development process is vital to a successful future. However, it's clear that the commission has no interest in hearing tonight what ATN has to say. We, as volunteers, have spent literally hours, hundreds of hours, attending meetings, reading materials, explaining concepts to our neighbors, crafting the best comments possible. We encouraged our neighbors to prepare comments and to take the time out of their busy schedules to attend this meeting tonight. It is clear that the commission's intent is to transmit this comprehensive land use plan with no regard for meaningful input from residents. If that is incorrect, ATN is respectfully requesting the opportunity to have a special meeting that was offered at the beginning of this meeting to the group in order for our concerns to be heard in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Rob Sniffin. Next speaker is Rob Sniffin, followed by Candace Mitchell.
I couldn't hear you, Mr. Clerk.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Rob Sniffin. I live in Benton Hills. I think what I had planned to say, I understand what you said, Mr. Mayor, about Benton, where I live, probably takes away a lot of what I was gonna say. But let me share with you something different. I've got petitions in my hand that were passed around in the neighborhood, and I want to give you guys some feedback. You hear from the alliance, and they tell y'all what people are saying in the neighborhood. Let me just tell you what one lawyer, who has sat in that seat before, by the way, and had people yelling and screaming, and I'll say something about that in a second, but when I was walking around just Harriman Circle with this petition, this is what I heard. The most telling comment, "There's no way the city commission will do that to us." That's what someone on Harriman Circle said. So that, that's what your people are saying. The comments I got back raged, ranged from raging mad to "There's no way the city commission would do that to us." Just think about that when y'all are talking about old, established neighborhoods. We didn't buy houses out where there's eight Starbucks and all these fancy things going on, and new, 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 going out, out, out. We didn't do that. We bought in town, made an investment in a sense of place. That gets thrown around a lot, the sense of place. Come on down to Benton Hills if you want a sense of place, about four o'clock in the afternoon with kids riding scooters and everything else. We don't want triplexes. We don't want anything of the sort, and if you've ever been to Benton, then you know that it wouldn't be a consistent use. I would just recommend maybe a little slowing down of the process and let Arti come and talk to people, because there's a lot of stuff going around, guys.
Sure. Thank you.
And you need to listen.
Thank you.
You need to listen. And if I could, leave these with the clerk.
Sure. That'd be great. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Candace Mitchell.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Candace Mitchell, 1639 Fernando Drive, in the lovely neighborhood of Los Robles. Everybody has been describing their neighborhood, and it's perfect. Mine's perfect, and everyone's perfect. But I was wondering how the planning commission really decided what neighborhoods were going to be designated suburban and what was going to be just urban. The problem is, I think you're looking at just a small window and saying, "Oh, well, there's fewer homeowners in this area, and so much of it is rental and so much is resident-owned." If you look in my neighborhood, it has gone through over, let's see, 70 years of modifications. And when I first moved in 40 years ago, I was the one, one of the ones who came in when there was a decline. I renovated my house, which was the original house in Farm back in the turn of the century. You look at it, and little by little, people are buying the smaller homes, buying the larger homes. It's very eclectic. We have million-dollar homes. We have small bungalows. And people come in, they restore them, and they may have them for rental for a little while, but it's an evolving process. You can't take a snapshot of one or two years to make your determination that this is a declining neighborhood and therefore ripe for rezoning. We adamantly object to designating Los Robles and several of the other downtown neighborhoods as being an urban area that needs to be infilled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Danielle Dixon. Danielle Dixon, followed by James Eibach.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Dixon, 316 DeSoto Street. Good evening, Mayor Daley, Commissioners and Staff. I'm Danielle, and I serve as president of the Los Robles Neighborhood Association, or LRNA. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you for a minute and a half tonight. I'm here to share petitions signed by over 100 Los Robles residents and LRNA members in opposition to the proposed land use change for our neighborhood under the comprehensive plan. Los Robles neighbors, LRNA members, and adjoining neighborhoods in attendance tonight in support of this petition, please stand. Los Robles is an historically significant and cohesive community platted in 1926 and listed on the National Register of Historic Places. For decades, our residential preservation land use designation has protected the small-scale, low-density character that define Los Robles and sustains its livability. These signatures represent more than names. They are the collective voice of those deeply concerned about the irreversible impact this land use shift would bring. And we gathered these signatures in less than a few weeks after the proposed changes were released in April, a timeframe far too condensed for working families to understand, absorb, and respond to the full scope of the amendments. This is not how public engagement should be done. We respectfully request that Los Robles remain designated residential preservation. If a change must occur, we support a shift to suburban residential preservation, which more accurately reflects our neighborhood's historic character and residential scale. Thank you for your time, for your service, and for listening to the people who live in, love, and invest in the heart of Tallahassee.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
James Eibach is next, and Jake Varn will follow.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is James Eibach. I reside at 1808 Fernando Drive. It is my family's home. My parents bought it in 1958. I had the privilege of growing up in Los Robles, riding my bike, selling Girl Scout cookies, playing in the park, climbing trees. And if you all enjoyed what I did as a childhood, growing up in Los Robles, then you would know how very special of a place it is. Our concerns is that that will be taken away from the families that live there now, that are trying to raise their kids in a safe neighborhood, in a beautiful neighborhood. And that's what Tallahassee is all about. I can't help but feel that you're trying to change this so that people can make a quick dollar. And it's really upsetting that it could even happen. And I really, I am very opposed to this, and I live in an area called Marcia Garden, and it's on Fernando, Northern Fernando, from Los Robles. And our biggest concern is the road going through. Now, if the traffic gets greater in Los Robles, then there is the opportunity that that road would go through, and all it would cause is more traffic and more danger for the families that take evening walks. I just think that it's a bad idea, and I hope that you understand. I hope that you take the time to walk through Los Robles and see what a beautiful area it is, and talk to the people that live there, because they all agree. And I just want to say thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, please.
Jake Varn, and then Dean Garjulow.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jake Varn. I live at 1501 Fernando Drive. My telephone number is 850-509-5585. Let me start by saying that I, along with many people, look at the world a little different than what Mr. White looks at it. I know that among myself and a couple colleagues here, we have over 100 years of experience in land use planning, and we beg to differ with Mr. White and his opinion. There's a difference between land use, when you're talking about land use and zoning, which he talks about, and we are talking about the comp plan changes. You have to change the comp plan in order to do the zoning. We want the comp plan left as is. Let me just read to you, for you that haven't done so, your current policy, or the policy that's proposed, in part reads, "The urban residential preservation category," which is where you want to put us, "is intended to provide low-to-medium-density residential uses with allowances for neighborhood-scale commercial uses, non-residential, such as professional and professional services and community service." Compare that, if you will, with the current policy that you have, which is at Policy 2.2.3 Residential Preservation, and it reads, "The primary function is to protect existing stable and viable residential areas from incompatible land use intensities and density intrusions. Further development primarily will consist of infill due to the built-out nature of the areas. Commercial, including offices, as well as any industrial land uses, are prohibited." Now, if you can sit here and good conscience read to me to say that this language is weaker than the current language you have, you and I go to different schools, because this language says they're prohibited, and this is the nose of the camel putting it, getting its nose in the tent. And next, we'll have the camel in there with us.
Thank you, Mr. Varn. Our next speaker, please.
Dean Garjulow, and then Fay Meacham.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Dean Garjulow. I'm at 1653 Fernando Drive. I'll be quick, because a lot of the points that I came to make have already been mentioned 100%. Danielle Dixon, Candace Mitchell. Los Robles is a special neighborhood, and I know that, you know, that's a huge, huge job that you guys have had, and you've admitted, you're not gonna get all of it right. I think that Los Robles is an exception to the overlaying plan. It needs more consideration. I think we've got some great suggestions by representatives, not only from our neighborhood, but the other neighborhoods that are similar to Los Robles. So, you know, at the very least, more time to make sure that we get it right. Guys, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Our next speaker, please.
Fay Meacham. She'll be followed by Marie Gibson.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Fay Gibson. I live at 625 McDaniel Street in Tallahassee, in Lafayette Park. I'm a 34-year resident of Lafayette Park Neighborhood. I was shocked on May 12th that this is the first information that I received that my zoning was gonna be changed. Proposed land use plan that if passed, if passed, will drastically and permanently alter my neighborhood. It will alter my investment in my home, and it will alter the fundamentals of my life. I am asking you to exempt Lafayette Park Neighborhood, and as long as, as well as Old Town and the other historic neighborhoods, from the changes that are designated in the land. use plan. Lafayette Park truly lives up to its designation as historic preservation, which is our current designation. We worked hard in our neighborhood to get that designation. I was there when we worked for it. We are historic preservation. The reason is because we are more than a collection of old buildings. We are a neighborhood. We walk together, visit with each other, we take in each other's trash cans, we meet in the streets and talk to each other. We are a neighborhood. We are not a high-density place for people to live. Our governors were born in our homes. Senators met on my front porch back in the day. It's a historic neighborhood. Most of us invested our life savings into our homes because of this pursuit of happiness that we were looking for. We didn't buy into a high-density place. It's not where we want to live. With your vote, you can preserve this for us, and with your vote, you can destroy it. I've heard last night, as Artie White talked about the fact that this land use plan doesn't matter, that the designation doesn't really matter that much, because after all, there's going to have to be these things of opt-in and opt-out. If that's the case, then it's illogical to include our neighborhoods in a land use plan that we're going to ignore.
You're at a minute and a half.
Much better would be to exempt our neighborhoods from the land use plan way before you transmit it. Please make that change before you transmit this document.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Murray Gibson, followed by James Ward.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Murray Gibson. I live at 625 McDaniel Street in Lafayette Park. I object to these changes and would ask you to consider at least making time for more conversation, as you've heard. First of all, lack of adequate warning. Mr. White mentioned the president of the Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods. We talked to her a couple of days ago. She learned about this plan last Friday for the first time. Even though there were a lot of conversations, they didn't go into the details of what the plan was going to be. It's obviously a radically important thing. And even if there is a way to bypass it, as was being suggested, fundamentally, it changes the landscape for the long term. And I, you know, I think that we, Tallahassee has residential neighborhoods that give it a character that many cities enjoy having. I think if we, if we do this, we're going to open up the door for developers to see opportunity to buy our properties, and it's going to change, and Tallahassee will no longer be one of the cities that is considered one of the best places to live in Florida or anywhere else. So I think preserving residential neighborhoods in a thriving city like this is really important, and this land use plan will not do that. There must be a clever, better way to do this with more discretion, and I ask that you give us the time to do that and that you pass a delay on the discussion. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
James Ward, and then Maisha Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is James Ward. I live at 2010 West Randolph Circle in Benton. I'm the president of the Benton Hills Neighborhood Association. I speak only in my personal capacity. I pose two questions. Who exactly has been clamoring for these changes to the Midtown neighborhoods? Question number two, why is there a push for these changes when obviously the residents of Midtown do not want them? Question, the answer, who wants these changes? Certainly not the residents before you. Why is there a push for these changes? That's a very good question. I wonder if the answer is a desire to gift developers more opportunity within our cherished in-town neighborhoods while continuing with business as usual in the excerpts. Whatever the reason, it should be clear that Midtown doesn't want the changes. A final thought, I had the privilege of living in an historic neighborhood in Kansas City, Missouri, before moving to Tallahassee. It was developed by a visionary by the name of J.C. Nichols. While you may not have heard of him, trust me, your planners have. And you've certainly heard of the neighborhoods that were greatly influenced in their design and development by him, including Beverly Hills and Westwood in Los Angeles, Highland Park in Dallas, and River Oaks in Houston. His approach to establishing residential subdivision was, quote, "planning for permanence with the objective of developing neighborhoods that would attract people that want a nicer place to live and, importantly, a desire to keep it that way." Planning for permanence is simply another way of saying residential preservation.
You're at a minute and a half.
That points up an irony. These, these categories, these proposed categories, they contain the word preservation, but I don't see much preservation in action here, and that's a shame.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Maisha Mitchell, and then Lisa Roberts.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Maisha Mitchell, 1009 Ellington Court in the Griffin Heights community. I am really excited about this discussion, because I'm glad to have a discussion finally about ordinances and changes in commercial entities. So one of the things that I'd like to say is around the neighborhood-first planning. Many people are using the neighborhood-first plans to make decisions about what should happen in their communities. And particularly in our area, we put the plan together so that folks would know what we like. I think some things have been misconstrued, though, in terms of what we like to see. The language may be similar, but it's not quite the same in terms of what vision that we hold. So we are asking you to take more time with us to make sure that we get it right if you're moving forward in this direction. One of the things that we put in our plan has to do with housing. It's a primary objective and a goal that we set. Affordable housing, we've lost the language already for some reason. We don't talk about it as much. It's more multi-development, quads and all this. We want people to be able to have homeownership, and the way it's moving, we are not getting to that as, as much as we'd like to see. Historic preservation is another area of concern for us. We want to make sure that we don't continue to lose what we've had, not only in the Frenchtown area, but in the Griffin Heights area. The people who've lived there 70, 80, 100 years would like to see our properties improved, but we want to change the character of our, our community. We want to keep it some characters as it is.
You're at a minute and a half.
We want to keep a legacy. We definitely want that, and we want to make sure that we have an environmental impact assessment for anything that gets done in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Lisa Roberts. She'll be followed by Kirsten Olson-Doolan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Lisa Roberts, 512 West Carolina Street, right in the heart of Frenchtown. There is still a Frenchtown south of Brevard Street. Anyone who's lived in Tallahassee for 30 years or more, and you say Frenchtown, they think right in the area where my home is, yet the line is being moved north a couple of blocks. I'm being pushed out of my neighborhood. Some of the changes, I'm not sure what people thought this was a great idea, and they contacted the planning department, but no one who lives in the neighborhood, none of the stakeholders in the neighborhood contacted the planning department and said, this is what we want. I believe people have great ideas. There's wonderful training at our institutions of higher learning. The planning departments do a great job. However, you have to consult, work with the people who are going to be impacted by these decisions, and that's not what's happening. The idea of going up, 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 that's fine. If you want to do student housing, make 20-story buildings, but put them on FSU's campus. We don't want it in our neighborhoods. I don't know what opportunities we have to actually get to express ourselves to you other than the, the minute and a half or whatever it is. I think you all are very receptive for us to do individual appointments, to come and speak with you. But if we can do group meetings to
You are at a minute and a half.
To discuss it. Not one person, all of the people who have spoken, not one has spoken in support of this. So I'm not sure which speculators, developers, people who don't live in our neighborhoods, I'm not sure who is contacting planning, but it's not us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Kirsten Olson-Doolan, followed by Chadwick Leonard, and then there will be one additional speaker.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kirsten Olson-Doolan. I'm at 1225 Talbot Avenue, 32308 in Greater Brand Hills. So I'm here representing Greater Brand Hills, also adjoining neighborhoods Capital Hills, Brookwood, Inglewood, and Benton. And of course, all these people are my neighbors, too. So I wanted to, first of all, just express that I think Tallahassee will be most successful as a city with strong neighborhoods, full-time, local residents, particularly downtown and inside Capital Circle, which is where I live. The, we, under the plan, and honestly, I haven't had a chance to really explore or learn more about the opt-out plan, so I'm just going to talk about the plan that I read, which we would be suburban residential preservation, and it would more than double our density. And we're already, I don't know if you've been to our neighborhood, we're already pretty dense with different housing types. So that's something that I don't care for. I think what's been working is working really well for us. There's also a lot of other commercial development around us, and I think we don't need to have any more encroachment on that. Tallahassee is a wonderful place. I'm going to keep it short because of time. I didn't have a chance to reach out as much as I would have liked to, because, as people have talked about, you know, getting the details late. But I really appreciate your time. Please know that we all say this out of love, love for where we are, love for Tallahassee. And we even, we even love you guys, too. I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Chadwick Leonard, and then Mary Frederick will be the last speaker that I have a forum for.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Chadwick Leonard, 2300 Bluff Oak Way, representing 1,000 friends of Florida. I would just like to echo the remarks of my colleague Vivian Young. It just seems like it has not been enough time to get a critical mass of citizen participation, and especially for the neighborhoods and the communities that will be affected most. So it is our hope that you kind of slow down this process to make sure that all the angles are thought about and that, that folks who will be affected by this have their say and have more input into the process. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mary Frederick. And Mayor, this is the last speaker that I have.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Mary Frederick, 805 Circle Drive. I've been a 40-year resident of Woodland Drives. I've also been the president of the neighborhood. I'm also kind of a, a community activist. I am shocked at this. I am just completely shocked. Tallahassee, the backbone, the backbone of Tallahassee are its neighborhoods. Its in-town neighborhoods are its heart. I don't understand this. I do not understand. I do not understand.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
No additional speakers.
Sounds good. Mr. White, come on back up. You heard a lot of the concerns. I want you to try to address what you can. Hey, colleagues, let me tell you where I'm coming from, by the way. We've got 30 minutes. There's no way that I can see us having a detailed conversation, especially with Commissioner Porter phoning in, with Commissioner Richardson in absentia. It is my intentions to entertain a motion to postpone action until the June 11th meeting, okay? So transmittal would be June 11th, and that's by recommendation of the manager. But let's utilize what time we have with Mr. White to answer any of the questions. And then we'll bring everybody back on June 11th, and when we have a full commission and no timer strengths, we'll be able to really dig in. That'll also give Mr. White the opportunity with his team to do continuous outreach with the neighborhoods. Any questions on what my intentions are? That's by recommendation of the manager. All right. Mr. White, you heard a lot of, lot of, lot of colleague, a lot of friends and neighbors out there that have a lot of concerns. So try to address what you heard, and let's continue this conversation.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. You know, I heard a lot of conversation about unique, eclectic downtown, in-town neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have, you know, big houses and small houses, neighborhoods that have like a women's center in the middle of it, it's not a residential use. The entire point of the urban residential preservation category is to reflect that. We have very specific policy language. It's eight point, or 2.8.11 that says, you know, zoning districts within the urban residential preservation category allowing densities over six units per acre and/or allowing non-residential uses shall only be applied, and that provides a criteria. The first one, to implement a city commission-approved neighborhood plan that was developed with neighborhood participation, the implementation of the plan shall also incorporate neighborhood engagement. That is the opt-in. So if you are a eclectic, cool, walkable, historic neighborhood near the city center, not exceeding six units, want to stay that way, this category reflects that exactly. Suburban residential preservation, you know, and I don't mean this in a critical kind of way, but reflects more of your standard cookie cutter, every house is the same, every lot is the same, everything is uniform kind of neighborhood. Those are great neighborhoods, too, but there's a difference between those two types of neighborhoods. And so we were reflecting those differences with different land uses. Again, to implement a land use category, you have to do zoning. And so we would work with neighborhoods that wanted to change something to create zoning, new zoning, that would allow the higher densities, allow the new uses. Otherwise, by all means, stay the cool, eclectic, walkable, historic neighborhood that you are. We want those neighborhoods and those neighborhood characters to remain. They add so much to Tallahassee, but what their land use designation today is, doesn't reflect what they are.
So, you know, the question was brought up, why are they even being brought up then? Why not exempt them?
Why not to exempt them would be the land use that they have today doesn't reflect what the neighborhoods are today.
Other questions? Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you. And Artie and team, thank you for the work that you do, and thank you, neighbors and friends, for being here tonight. I keep hearing we need more time, and I just went back through the timeline. I know we've been talking about the comprehensive plan and re-up and updating it for a very long time, starting in 2019, 2021, workshops took place in 2023, and so forth and so on. And I'm not, I'm just not understanding why I'm hearing that they're just, folks are just hearing about it last week. And I know we've, I've got numerous emails from ATN and others. I'm just not sure. And we have this a lot with, with, with different issues that people, I guess, tune in and tune out, or whatever it is that's going on. And we, every time there's a meeting, there may be a different group of folks there. Every time you meet, with a different set of, of wishes and concerns, and you think you're following the wishes and concerns of one, and then you find later on that they, there are folks who did not, did not know about it. So I'm, I'm not sure how we resolve that, but I'm hoping that now that everybody, everybody knows now, right? Everybody knows. And the answer to that is no, everybody does not. Only the people who are in this room or folks we've heard from know about it. There are those who don't know, haven't heard, but I'm hoping that between now and June 11, that some folks, additional folks get to hear about it and understand what's going on, because I'm sitting here looking, like I'm looking at a two-horn dilemma. Neighbors are saying they want, they want to keep the character of their neighborhood. They, the proposed amendments are allowing that, but yet, we're saying we want to keep the character of our neighborhood. Now, the other thing, too, in order, this, this is not a question, these are just my thoughts. The time for planning for growth is not when you need it, but it's before you need it. And the comp plan that we're operating from now was, was created 30 years ago and has been amended along the way. And so we're now at, at a point where we've got to decide how we're going to grow going forward. I know right now neighborhoods are like they are in, in developing neighborhoods, and we say we want to do infill. We want to fill in instead of spreading out, although we have made provisions for spreading out, but it's in the county, in the, in the city limits. In order to be able to do infill, we've got to look at what is available for infill, and it has to be done in an organized kind of way. And so I see this as an opportunity to try to grow with some logic and some reason. And I understand, I live in a, a neighborhood where I know, I've heard some, some of my neighbors say, you don't touch our neighborhood. Well, that's how we feel today. Five years from now, that neighborhood would probably change. 10 years from now, that neighborhood would change even more, because some of us won't be there anymore. It'll be our children or our grandchildren. It'll be our children or our grandchildren. And what are we leaving them? What are we prepared for as we look at our city growing? What do, what do we, what do we do? Wait until we need it, or do we plan for it now? And I think the answer is, or I know the answer is, we plan for it now, so that by the time we get there, we will hopefully have gotten it right and have an opportunity to, to take it further. So I encourage all of us to, now that, now that we know, we've heard, tell the rest of your neighbors, so that when we come back, it won't be that I just heard about it last week, because a lot of work, a lot, lot of work has gone into this. And the city and county jointly, we have met, we've debated, we've discussed, we've, we spent a lot of time on this as well, and that's why staff is where they are, because we have given them direction to do this, and they've gone into the community and gotten feedback from who they thought were the people who were driving this. But we're here even tonight that some only learned about it last week, and it's been going on since 2019. So somewhere in there, we've got some communication gaps and some breakdowns somewhere or another, and I don't know where it is, but, but let's, 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 neighbors and friends, let's go, let's leave here tonight and go tell everybody, this is what's happening. But we learned tonight that we don't have to change our destination if we don't want to, and we don't want to, right? And let's get everybody to agree, because there'll be those who won't, won't know and won't agree. So I'm just saying, let's come together and let's get this thing right for the future. Folks are depending on us to do that. And so make, make our choice easy. Make our choice easy, but let's have some agreement so that we can try to move forward and grow together. And we're only represented here tonight, I'm only hearing from a few neighborhoods, and that concerns me. And, and so the rest of the neighborhoods who may come back and watch this later, if you have any issues, let us know now where the issues are. I'm not, not hearing from, I don't see any neighborhoods outside of Midtown or a few other neighborhoods, but there are many, many neighborhoods, hundreds of neighborhoods in our city, and we're looking to try to do some infill, so we need to hear from all these other neighborhoods. Thank you for listening, everybody.
Commissioner Porter, I'm going to entertain a motion to postpone transmittal until the June 11th, but I wanted to give you an opportunity, since you're still participating telephonically, to weigh in with any comments or questions that you may have. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I fully support that motion. I think we do need to postpone, and I want to thank everyone for coming and for the extensive engagement that there, there has been, that I've heard from folks via, via email and in person and at workshops and, and staff as well. I know that a tremendous amount of effort and work and time has been, been put into this comp plan revision. I also believe that while there are aspects that I know folks are concerned about and that I have questions or concerns about, ultimately, I believe that it's come a long way and that there's a lot of good and will do a lot of good. That being said, as far as the, the timeline, although we have been working on this for several years, the proposal itself, the meat itself, the language itself, is still, has only been available for public consumption for a few months. So I don't think that, and I, I don't need to repeat this, I have advocated for slowing down, advocated for, you know, getting this right, figuring out nuance where there can be nuance, having this dialogue so that if there are misconceptions, we can clarify them. If there are concerns, we can address them. And there has been input that has been received that we have adopted and included and incorporated into the plan, which I think is the way the process should, should be. It doesn't need to be antagonistic, it, but I think that we all need to do our part to allow for that process to play itself out. So I, I agree with the direction of, of postponing until June 11th, and I look forward to continuing to have these conversations in the meantime, so that hopefully we're in a better place on June 11th to, to move forward. I did have just one question for Artie, and that is, as far as the, a neighborhood land use plan, so is that the only way then? We're saying that the, the zoning designation could change? And if so, what would that process look like as far as a neighborhood initiating that kind of discussion or, or change if they're interested?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Porter. The, the policy 2.8.11, and it's actually the same for the suburban residential preservation 2.8.8, provides four different criteria that you would, at least one of those would have to be met. So the first one, it applies more at the, the entire neighborhood scale, and so that would be to, and I'll just read it verbatim, to implement a city commission-approved neighborhood plan, so that plan would have to be approved by the city commission, that was developed with neighborhood participation, the implementation of the plan shall also incorporate neighborhood engagement. One of the other ways you could have a zoning district that exceeds six is specifically for existing development of a density of six units per acre or more. So if it's already more than six units per acre, then you could be recognized and brought in to, to be a conforming use, to serve as a transition between high-density residential, and so that would be things like apartment complexes. We define, I believe it's 45 units per acre or more is high-density. So you could scale up from six to 12 in a transition between low-density residential and things like that high-density residential, major commercial uses or arterial roadways. And then finally, if there was new neighborhood developed on undeveloped property, you could do up to the 12 units per acre, but that would be not in an existing neighborhood, that would be a brand-new neighborhood. So it would be one of those four criteria, the, the one relevant to existing neighborhoods, especially existing neighborhoods with a density of six units per acre or less, would be that neighborhood plan. In terms of the process, we didn't get too prescriptive in the comp plan on that process. We really would want that to be a little bit more organic with the neighborhood. Some neighborhoods have HOAs, some neighborhoods have neighborhood associations, some neighborhoods, there was actually a gentleman who spoke who doesn't have either. And so we wouldn't want to put that kind of hurdle on a neighborhood, if they don't have an HOA or don't have a neighborhood association. So it would be something that the neighborhood itself came together to determine what the plan looks like. Some neighborhoods might form a subcommittee, some neighborhoods might want the officers of their neighborhood association to be the ones developing the plan. So we didn't get too prescriptive, because we wanted to be flexible to be able to be leveraged by any neighborhood that wanted to do that effort, and we would work with them on what that would look like and how they would achieve it. We have a neighborhood affairs department that helps neighborhoods create neighborhood associations, so that would be an option as well. But again, we didn't want to put the bar so high that you had to have a HOA or a neighborhood association or something to do that. So we, we kind of would leave it to the neighborhood to, to control their destiny.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. I, I understand that, and that makes sense, and that's something that I, I'm not sure how I feel about, because on the one hand, we want to be flexible, and then on the other hand, we might want a more formal process so that, you know, people feel maybe more protected, especially those who, you know, feel strongly they don't want this. So maybe that's something that I'll talk to you more about between now and our next meeting, because I want to hear from, I want to give Commissioner Matlow an opportunity to speak as well. Thank you, Artie.
You're very welcome.
Final comments, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to start by saying, I want us all to take a minute and believe that we can make comp plan changes that plan for our future without receiving widespread community opposition at these meetings. I, I respect the work that staff does. I think it's done with good intentions, and I think there has been some community engagement, but I think what we're seeing is we are falling short. There's got to be a way that, that we can do it better, because, you know, what I haven't seen today are people who worked with our staff and are here celebrating their achievements. They're not stepping up, telling us what they got worked into the plan. They're not telling us their great vision that they see reflected in the plan, and to me, that's a problem. You know, I, and I don't fault staff for that, I understand the process, but when we look at concerns that were raised earlier, the timeline, this is the first time the decision-making body has taken public feedback at all, and we're in a transmittal hearing. The last time we met was a workshop environment, the, the final product was not ready for us to even discuss, and we weren't taking public comment at that time. So I, I do believe in a Tallahassee that works together for more infill. I don't think the broad-stroke approach is the way to do it. I think the way to do it is a more scalloped approach, particularly on land uses and types of developments that we don't want to see that need to be redeveloped, that are auto-centric. I think it looks at, looking at design standards on an individual neighborhood basis of what can be included, because to me, Los Robles is one of the prime examples of where duplexes and quadplexes intermingle in a neighborhood and you don't even notice it. And I, I don't really have a problem with that, but what we're presenting today, I don't think makes that goal. And I think we need to look at neighborhood feedback not as an obstacle to be overcome, but partners to be brought to the table to find consensus and move this process forward. I'm not going to support rescheduling the transmittal hearing till June 11th today, because I don't think we're ready for the transmittal hearing. What I will support is an informational item coming back, so we can hear these comments and then have the discussion of what needs to be changed before we transmit. So I've heard from...
Hold on just a second, folks. Hold on just a second.
And so from the neighborhoods that spoke today, French Town, Lafayette Park, Los Robles, Woodland Drives, Old Town, the area in between Griffin Heights and High Road, Benton Hills, ATN-represented neighborhoods, Greater Brent Hills and its surrounding neighborhoods, they're not ready to move forward, so I won't want to be ready on June 11th to move forward either. And secondly, I think the language we have concerning the opt-in needs to be changed as well if we do move forward with that type of neighborhood plan approach, because currently the folks in opposition don't really have a say after this gets adopted in that neighborhood plan. They have an opportunity to engage, they'll have an opportunity to be heard at a meeting, but they want to be a decision-maker in whether that neighborhood plan is approved. This board or future city commissions would be the, the decision-maker. So what happens when three property owners in a neighborhood want a neighborhood plan, and other property owners in the neighborhood don't agree? It gets brought to this commission, the commission can then decide to move forward with the neighborhood plan, and the neighborhoods being, speaking out today may start to change in a way that they don't want to see. So we really need to look at, if it is an opt-in approach, how property owners in that neighborhood have a real say in being able to opt in altogether. And I mean, my comments go way beyond just what was approached today, which is why I think we need another, another meeting, because I do think if we're looking for infill, we need to be bought in as a community to do it. My neighborhood's listed. I live south of I-10. My neighborhood's suburban, urban residential. I'm not sure why it's different than other folks who are listed as urban residential. Like if we're going to cookie cutter or splice out individual neighborhoods, let's do it even more so in, in a scaffold approach that, that makes sense for, for everyone. So I'll save my long list of comments on individual items of the changes for, for the next meeting, but that's where I am today.
Mr. Mayor.
One point.
One point. One point. Commissioner Matlow, I appreciate your, your comments, but I think we got to be careful that, I know you, we heard from people from neighborhoods, but every person who spoke did not speak on behalf of the neighborhood, and so we want to respect, we respect that structure. We heard from residents, people who live in Griffin Heights, we heard from people who live in French Town, we heard from people who live in, in other neighborhoods, and then there were those who did come forward and say that they were president of their neighborhood association and what have you. I'm just saying, let's be, be careful, because we heard, because we heard from someone who lives in that neighborhood, that doesn't mean that they're speaking on behalf of that neighborhood. And I'm, I'm okay with having additional meetings, but I think that those meetings, those, the attempts have been made to have work, have workshops in the community that educate, well, I know you're shaking your head, but there, there's a whole list of dates in the agenda item, and these meetings did occur over a number of years. However, I understand that we're, we're where we are, we don't have to go backwards. Here's an opportunity to have what, however many meetings you want to have between now and June 11th, and let what, what comes as a result, with staff, and what comes of that comes, come back here, because I just believe that when, when residents take the time to come here, they're coming to expect us to make a decision. And so I am, and we are, we're free to, to visit any of these, these workshops. I think that the neighborhoods should, and our, our staff should reach out and have these workshops, have these opportunities to talk between now and June 11th. And on June 11th, we, I think we need to be ready to, to do something. The county has already transmitted, we're one city in the county. So what we've done, what we've done tonight is we've broken the joint, so we, we have the county traveling, and that's okay, it can travel separately. But the issue is that when someone wants to do something in their neighborhood, if they're in the county, then they're working for this set of rules. If they're in the city, they're working with this set of rules, instead of having one set of rules to work from. And so, and, and if that's where we are, that's where we are, but I just need us to think about that, that more time is fine, but more time is a, is a continuous delay on trying to make sure we're, we're growing together as a, as a county and a city, being one city in the county. So I just wanted to, wanted to say that, add that.
All right. Well, we're going to move forward with June 11th. We'll have Commissioner Porter back in chambers. By the way, tell your father happy birthday once again. We'll have Commissioner Richardson back in chambers as well, and we can go from there. So that does not mean that we have to transmit on the 11th if the majority of the body decides not to, but June 11th is the next available, which gives plenty of time for us to continue working with all the neighborhoods and our good friends and all the residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
I've moved that we do not schedule a transmittal hearing for June 11th, rather transit, schedule an agenda item for commissioner feedback to be included into a transmittal hearing to be scheduled in the future.
So, there's a, there is a motion on second. Before I recognize the motion in the second, let's check on, what is the timeframe legally for submittal?
Mr. Mayor, let me ask Artie, I'm not sure there's a legal timeframe, but there's a practical timeframe to preserve the jointness of the plan, so I think Artie can speak to that in terms of when the county is intending to adopt and when the city is scheduled to adopt. I believe June 11th is still satisfactory to meet that timeline, but Artie, paint that picture for us, please.
Right, because this is a publicly initiated effort, we don't have the same timeline where we have to adopt within a certain timeframe that we would if it were privately initiated, and so you're not bound by that. But the city manager is correct, the, the county will be considering adopting the comp plan on July 11th. You know, it is fully possible to have a county land use element and a city land use element that are different, but in the spirit of having a joint comprehensive plan, ideally, the timelines would be fairly close. Right now, the, the, you know, if you have transmitted tonight, the adoption would have been August 20th, and the county commission adoption was July 8th. You would still stay on that timeframe if you were to transmit at your July meeting, but you're not bound by that.
Okay.
He means June.
The June meeting.
Yes, June.
June meeting, okay. With that in mind, all right, Commissioner Matlow has made a motion for an information, so would, tell me your thought process, how this works out, Commissioner Matlow.
Sure. So we would schedule an item based on the updates presented by staff, based on the comments we've heard from neighborhoods and any work they do together in between that. At that meeting, June 11th, we'd have an opportunity that the public would be able to give their full three minutes. The commission would then be a... The commission would then be able to either say, we're happy with how it is. Let's move forward to the transmittal hearing within two to four weeks. Or, we'd like to say, see a few changes, a few minor tweaks to this plan before moving forward to the transmittal hearing, at which point, we can take action on June 11th to make changes that could then be transmitted likely within a month after that.
So, then you are, you are suggesting that there would be an additional transmittal meeting in July?
Yes, based on, yes.
Oh, okay. So, now, okay. All right, I'll entertain the motion. I'm not going to support the motion. I'm not going to support the motion on the table. I'm ready to just continue it. Everybody's going to have the opportunity to speak again. If we decide to transmit, majority of this board in June, that's great. If the majority of the board decides not to transmit, we will go from there. I'm, I'm not ready to make decisions that are going to impact schedule without the full body here to be able to weigh in, not knowing other commissioners' plans. But, there is a motion on the table for an informational item made by Commissioner Matlow, second by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And then, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. And so, it is a two-two vote. So, the motion fails on a two-two, which puts us right back to where we are. And I am going to suggest that we carry forward to the June meeting, June 11th, where we will have a full hearing once again, and hopefully, everybody in chambers. All right? With that, is there any other business to come before us? Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming out this evening.